Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman, Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton, and Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And we have words of inspiration from Pastor Jim Edwards tonight from Revival Church. Jim?
Father in heaven, we thank you for the blessing of your presence here tonight. And Lord, we would ask and pray for your favor, Lord, upon the meeting here. Lord, you know all things. You know the needs of every individual here. And Lord, we want to pray that there would be unity, there would be compassion, there would be consideration for all the needs, Lord. So many things to address. And we do thank you that we can be in a city where we have community together. And Lord, we pray the same goals of working together and the betterment of each and every person that's here. So God, we pray that you would grant wisdom for all of those who are in authority here to help make decisions, Lord, for the betterment of our community. And Lord, may you grant them wisdom. Lord, we pray that you would bring favor for the men and women that would make decisions with integrity and the best interest of individuals, but Lord, us as a community as a whole. And so we pray for your help. Thank you for watching over. And we're just grateful that you would grant us life. And Lord, have your way in the meeting tonight. We pray in Jesus' name.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Denver, would you lead us in prayer?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we have a presentation this evening, proclamation. Gentlemen, if we'd all gather up front. And Mr. Len Tavernetti, would you please join us up front, sir? So tonight, we have a special presentation to make this evening. You notice that Mr. Tavernetti is wearing a Purple Heart. It hasn't always been called the Purple Heart, but it is America's oldest military decoration dating back to 1782. And hopefully, I'm not going to steal too much of your historical thunder, but I have a couple of things I'd like to share with everybody. The Purple Heart is one of the most recognized and respected medals awarded to members of the US Armed Forces. Introduced as the badge of military merit originally by General George Washington in 1782, the Purple Heart is also the nation's oldest military award. In military terms, the award has what's called broken service, for those of you who know what that is. As it was ignored for nearly 150 years until it was reintroduced on February 22nd, 1932, on the 200th anniversary of George Washington's birth. The medal's plain inscription, quote, "for military merit," end quote, barely expresses its significance. And on 7 August, 1782, from General Washington's headquarters in the Hudson Highlands in Newburgh, New York, he was lamenting the fact that after six years of war, that his officers were having mutiny. There was some desertion amongst the ranks. Congress couldn't fund the military as much as they wanted to. The general wanted to give his other generals the opportunity to do battlefield commissions, but Congress took that authority away from General Washington as the commander in chief of the armed forces at the time. And so he couldn't even designate an officer and then subsequently pay them. So through his leadership, what he decided to do was to write a letter and do it on his own. And it reads like this. It's very brief. "The general," talking about himself, "ever desirous to cherish virtuous ambitions in his soldiers, as well as to foster and encourage every species of military merit directs and whenever any singularly meritorious action is performed, the author of it shall be permitted to wear on his facings over the left breast pocket the figure of a heart in purple cloth or silk edged with narrow lace or binding." Keep in mind that Congress hadn't authorized any military decorations at this point. "Not only instances of unusual gallantry, but also of extraordinary fidelity and essential service in any way shall meet with a due reward. Before this favor can be conferred on any man, the particular fact or facts on which it is to be grounded must be set forth to the commander in chief accompanied with certificates from the commanding officers of the regiment and brigade to which the candidate for the reward belonged, or other incontestable proofs. And upon granting it, the name and regiment of the person with the actions so certified are to be enrolled in the book of merit, which will be kept at the orderly office. Men who have merited this last distinction to be suffered to pass all guards and sentinels which officers are permitted to do." He ends with, "The road to glory and a patriot army in a free country is thus open to all. This order is also to have retrospect to the earliest stages of the war and to be considered as a permanent one from this point forward." And so it fell away after a few years, but it was resurrected on February 22nd, 1932, as I mentioned, on the 200th anniversary of George Washington's birth. The War Department, which was the predecessor to the Department of Defense that we know of today, announced the establishment of the Purple Heart Award in General Order Number Three. By order of the President of the United States, the Purple Heart, established by General George Washington at Newburgh, August 7, 1782, during the War of the Revolution, is hereby revived out of respect to his memory and military achievements by order of the Secretary of War, signed Douglas MacArthur, General, Chief of Staff of the Army. And so it's fitting, as we head into Memorial Weekend, that we offer and proclaim in the city of Menifee, therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the city of Menifee hereby proclaims Menifee as a Purple Heart city, one of the very few cities on the state of California so designated, honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in the uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans, approved this 21st day of May, 2014, signed by the entire City Council. Here you are, sir. Mr. Tavernetti, this is presented to you. This month is Purple Heart Community in the City of Menifee.
Members of the council and citizens of the city of Menifee, thank you very much for signing this proclamation and annually paying honor on a special day to the members of the service who have been designated to wear the Purple Heart. It's not really an award that you earn or win. It's something that just recognizes your military service in a special way. I'd like to take a couple of minutes. You mentioned Memorial Day. To look maybe a week beyond that and back 70 years. Seventy years ago, we had, on that day, airmen, seamen, Marines, Coast Guardsmen, and sailors boarding ships and planes to fly across the English Channel and onto and over the beaches of Normandy. At that time, during World War II, we had 16 million men and women in uniform. Today, 10% remain alive. They are leaving us at a rate of 600 a day. In fact, if one of them dies today and is eligible to be buried in Arlington Cemetery, their loved ones have to wait three months for the funeral. That's how fast we're losing them. The Korean War vets are not far behind. And unfortunately, the Vietnam vets are catching up to them. Something about Vietnam, the life expectancy is not great. So I have a favor to ask of you. Of that great body of Americans who contributed to World War II, the average age of a veteran is 92. And not only the veterans who were in uniform, but the people back here who supported them. You know, they grew crops, they worked in factories, they taught schools, they worked in hospitals. Everybody supported that soldier in World War II. And everybody has a story. But often, we are hearing about families who, once their loved one has passed away of that age, they go to their closet and they start emptying it out and they find a shoebox. And they open it and they find a medal. And it's like, oh my God, great-grandpa was in World War II? I never knew that. Uncle Joe or cousin Ernie. So if you know someone who's in their late 80s or 90s, ask them the next time you talk to them, what'd you do during World War II? And you might find quite a few heroes in your family. And you want to pass on their stories. So, thank you very much. And...
One more, one more. Right here. Thank you. And you might be happy to know that Deputy Mayor Edgerton's father-in-law is a Pearl Harbor survivor. Lives right here in Sunset.
Congratulations.
I collect a rubber.
Yep.
Brandon.
Thank you, staff and gentlemen, for that presentation. And Madam Clerk, I understand that we may need to have an addition to the agenda at this time. Could you update us on that, what that might be?
Yes, sir. The city manager has asked that we add an item for an update regarding the construction closure involving the 215. And our CTC has been kind enough to come forward with that. We just need your permission to put that on the agenda because it did come up after the posting of the regular agenda.
Counsel, is there any objection for this presentation at this time? Hearing none, that portion of the agenda is modified. Mr. Johnson, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Eliza Cheveria, hopefully I've said that correctly.
You did.
We've known each other for quite a while. From RCTC, is here to provide counsel and update on the 215 widening and impending full freeway closure. The reason this is coming before council is there's a traffic plan that our city engineer needs to sign. And we didn't feel comfortable signing that traffic plan, which would reroute traffic through our city streets without updating the full council. So our CTC is here and going to present the project and some information for us and for our residents to be aware of. Eliza?
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm always tasked with following up a presentation that's very tough. I don't proclaim to have, as heartfelt news, but hopefully, this is an item that will be to the benefit of the community here in Menifee and to the traveling public going down the 215. I was here probably about maybe 14 or 15 months ago when we kicked off this project. It did kick off in February 2013. And things have been moving along. You know, I know that Southern California needs rain, but I think the rain or the lack of rain has been to the benefit of this project, just being able to deliver it more quickly to this community. Just want to talk a little bit about the benefits of this project. It is a 14.6-mile project. And we, down in this lower end of the project, it is basically improvements in the center median. And therefore, any of you that have driven that recently, you see a lot of pavement. And it's kind of hard to drive by that when you're stuck in traffic and wonder, hmm, why can't they re-strike this and get us on there? And that's something that we experienced when we did the improvement on what we call the I-215 South project. That was six miles of basically pavement in the center median. But this, we looked at and we determined that we could deliver that portion of the project earlier to the traveling public. So that's the direction that we're headed in. With another caveat also of benefit is that by doing this work, by doing the closures, full freeway closures, it allows the workers to get there on the freeway and to access the work that they need to do in a more efficient manner and in a safe manner. I mentioned about the acceleration of the work. Right here, this photo shows actively working on the Salt Creek Bridge. And there are six piers that need to be constructed, two still remain to be constructed. And those are the ones that would be easier to access through the top of the freeway and the closure. So what are we looking at? We're looking at approximately 17 days of full closures through the period of May through October of this year. So it's going to be sporadically through that time period. They will be nighttime closures. Majority of them will be on the northbound freeway there, portion of the freeway. And the number of closures, of course, are always due to weather. And that's why I have that approximate 17. We're looking at between late May and October. As a matter of fact, if this is approved, then we will begin the work next Thursday, which is the 28th of May. And again, the closures are generally between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. When you get towards the weekend, it gets a little bit, like if it's Friday into Saturday, it goes one hour. It's from 11:00 to 6:00. But generally, they are between 10:00 PM and 5:00 PM. And we're looking at the detour. I'll show the map here for that. Basically, we'll be detouring off of Newport Road, going northbound to Menifee Road, and then turning on McCall. And then the reverse for the southbound. One of the things that we've found that expedites these type of closures is to appoint a coordinator on site. That makes it more efficient in terms of when we do have a closure, if they get their work done sooner, we have someone there that's saying, hey, open up these lanes and not leaving it up to the contractor to open them up because they have that time span there. So that's one thing that we take very seriously. We are doing a lot of bridge work in the city of Paris right now. And we do have that appointed coordinator. And that has actually made the whole process a lot better. One thing that we will provide to the city manager and city engineer is direct contact with our registered engineer, with this coordinator, Mr. George Harold, and also our CTC project manager, who I failed to introduce. Here is Alex Minor. He is our current project manager for this project. And as our outreach, we're entering into our 69th construction alert. We generally issue them weekly if we have to do them either, sometimes as work wanes, it's either every other week or sometimes twice in a week. But I don't think that's really happened during this. We've been pretty consistent with the one time a week. We will have changeable message signs seven days in advance to let the folks know when we are going to have that full-time closure. We will have the CHP as part of our CoZEP program that will be there on-site. And then also, we will be contacting the emergency responders to let them know that these closures are happening. And if there are any other areas, any special events, anything that's happening when we have those closures, hopefully, we'll be able to coordinate with the city and get that handled ahead of time to let the folks know. As always, we like you to stay connected with our project. We do have a project website. We have a helpline that folks are able to call when we do have issues and emergencies. We do tweet. And then we also have IE-511, which is our regional program for the traveling and transit. And that pretty much wraps it up. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Eliza. Mr. Mayor, members of council. Eliza, would you consider not using McCall and going up to Highway 74? I think there's an issue at night coming down the steep grade on McCall. Trucks would be using their gears or their apparatus to slow them down, and it'd be pretty loud for the residents. Is there a way to reroute that up to 74 to get on the freeway there?
You know, I will let Alex speak to that. We did take a look at it, and I think he probably has a better handle of the process.
Okay. There's also the hospital there on McCall, so we don't want the truck traffic interfering with any emergency vehicles on McCall as well.
Like Eliza mentioned, my name is Alex Minor. I'm the new project manager for this project. We did take a look at that detour alignment at the request of the city manager and the public works director. One of the things that, I also looked at what's the grade on McCall Road. Going westbound, the grade is actually not as steep as going eastbound. And so, and the benefits of that is that the fact that the grade is not steep, the chance of the trucks probably using their jake brakes is probably going to be very slim. And then also, the housing that's close to the highway there, it's kind of set back by at least 50 feet. And you do have the subdivision wall and some trees and vegetation that will help block if there's any jake breaks that's occurring in that route. The other concern with extending the detour up to Highway 74 is that, one of the things when you develop a detour alignment, you want to have it safe and efficient for the motorists to come off, get on the detour, and then come back onto the freeway. If you extend it further north, what happens is that we're going to have to be very diligent about making sure that, one, we don't confuse the motorists because they're going to have options potentially to cut across on McCall, Ethanak, until they get to Highway 74. And so that raises some issues, some confusion with the motorists, especially if they're going in a northbound direction for that detour. And so really, trying to get it up to 74, if you look at it just as an overall view, it kind of looks good, getting the motors back on the state highway. But in essence, because of the longer distance and the opportunities for the motorists to take a route off of the detour, it creates potential safety issues for, one, the workers on the freeway because they can get on the freeway and enter the work area. And also, it's harder to manage that closure as you have a longer detour. So I'm recommending that we keep our detour as short as possible so that we can get the detour traffic off and back on the freeway in an efficient manner. Otherwise, there's a potential complaint that could occur with confused motorists or just the extra travel time that's taking them. There are going to be questions. Why can't we get back on McCall Road or Ethanak Road?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to be clear, the northbound closure would be routing traffic Newport, Menifee Road, McCall, back to the freeway.
Yes.
If there's a southbound closure, what would the anticipatory route be between McCall and the exchange? Are you going to be going Bradley? Or are you going to go across the freeway, down McCall, down Menifee, and back to Newport?
It would be the same route. And the reason is because of the heavier volumes of truck traffic potential that could be on detoured. McCall Road, Menifee, and Newport are designated potentially as truck routes. One of the things that we looked at was the potential truck routing that the city has. And I believe Newport and McCall and portions of Menifee is designed to handle trucks. And so that's one of the advantages. If you use the detour to the west of the freeway, you have more residential homes with driveways.
Correct. I would not recommend using the west side. That was my point, number one.
It's not a good option, yeah.
And two, is there an ability, and maybe you could work with the city engineer on this, to reroute the trucks down 74 and down Menifee? I'm concerned at night, on the southbound closure, you're going to have trucks going down McCall. It's a steep grade. They're going to be using their heavy trucks. They're going to be loud. They're going to be popping their transmissions and their braking systems through that corridor, which will be quite loud. I know that you have a lot of work to do, and we need to get this work done, but we also have residents that we have to be concerned about, too. So is that at least an option to consider, to discuss at a future time?
I've actually also looked at that. If you start the detour in the southbound direction, at 74, what you'll have to do is basically close the access onto the freeway at Ethanak and McCall.
I'm only talking about truck traffic. That's it. Regular motorists can drive on McCall. That's not the issue. The issue's only 18-wheel, larger trucks, that you could post a sign that says, "Truck Route, Truck Traffic Down Ethanak, Down Menifee Road." That's what I would like you to consider.
We could probably put a changeable message. We'd probably have to recommend trucks use 74 over to Menifee. That's something we can definitely look at.
Anything you could do to alleviate that truck traffic off McCall, we'd appreciate.
Yes, we'll definitely take a look at that.
Councilmember August?
Yes, I understand the reasons and your decision for choosing McCall. But as a council member, for all the people in the council, I want to make, when you're factoring that decision, making that decision, I want to make it clear from the council that there is a hospital on that street. And I want you to be aware of that. And I'm not sure that that will change your mind, but I'd just like to point there is a hospital. So if we hear anything about it, I'd at least like you to realize, and anybody else at the council did mention that, to identify that hospital.
Yes, I recognize there's a hospital there.
Thank you. So why, my question for you is, why do we have to go through this? Is there a particular engineering or construction need why we have to do a full closure as opposed to a partial closure? Has it to do with staging of vehicles? What's going on?
Oh, no, it's actually, and I think what's happened, Eliza mentioned the word "full closure." It's actually just a partial closure. It's either going to be southbound or northbound direction.
But both, when I, okay, I'm talking about both lanes will be closed northbound.
Both lanes, yes, yes.
So what's the compelling construction issue that is making that happen?
And the reason why we're doing, we're asking for this approval, is there's going to be a point where the public is going to see basically completed lanes, and you can't access it. And so the reason why we're doing this is we want to be able to open those lanes as soon as possible instead of having six miles of pavement that's completed, but nobody can use it. And the controlling item of work that prevents us from opening those lanes sooner is Salt Creek Bridge. Allowing the contract to get up on top of the highway, they can do the construction a lot more efficiently. Right now, they have to go in from the median and build each pier one at a time and then kind of build it as they come out of the bridge. Getting on top, they can do everything simultaneously. And that basically will save about, we're estimating about a good two-month savings.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor.
The main thing is the savings of time.
Yeah, all right, excellent. Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, I just want to along with everyone else, thank you for taking the time to come down here and give a presentation. I know you don't do this for every city. But we're very indebted to the RCTC, as all the cities are around here. You guys do great work. Most of the people here probably know, but a lot of people don't know, that our funding, a lot of our funding comes through you for a lot of highway projects. And you have a large staff that puts a lot of time in to the benefit of Menifee. And now you're dragging down here at night to give us a presentation, just as a courtesy, because these things have to happen. There are probably people who don't want the inconvenience of a smallpox vaccination, but it's probably better to have one. And we wouldn't do well if we didn't have these freeways and byways and highways. They have to be done. And thank you, guys, for what you do. Really do appreciate your program. And I know our mayor is our representative to your organization on the alternate. I used to be the representative. We know what you do, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Leclair?
Thank you. Going through three construction zones to and from work every day, what I find is that some of the Caltrans signs are very misleading. When, although your material indicated that the closures would be at 10:00 PM, when do you actually start coning off lanes and controlling the traffic? I believe that should be on your signs as opposed to a closure times because it's terribly misleading because it's terribly misleading when you start coning off an hour to an hour and a half ahead of time for those of us that make a decision to go one way or the other based upon the signs that have been blinking on the freeway.
Yeah, I can answer that question. The times that we have set is, that's the start time for the contractor to begin the closure. And then they have to pick up the closure by the end time. Because if they don't, I'm going to get a call, you guys will complain, hey, what's going on Alex? Where's the traffic manager supposed to be handling this? And so those times we're giving you, they're hard times for us. Now, I can't speak for the other projects, but I know what I experienced at City of Paris. If we go out, if we start early or we go beyond, I get the call and I immediately call a traffic manager.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So cones go out at 10, they're up at 5 and we're ready to go. That's what I just heard.
That is right.
All right, any other discussion? I want to echo what the deputy mayor said. Thank you very much for taking time out of your busy day to come down here and update the council and the public. It was valuable and we needed to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us.
Onto approval of meeting minutes. We have two minutes from the meeting of April 30, which was a workshop, and then also of May 7. Can we take those in one motion, Madam Clerk?
You certainly may.
Are there any modifications to either one of these sets of minutes? Are there any hearing none, both of those minutes are approved? Onto agenda modification and approval, do we have any other modifications other than the one that we just went through for presentation? Okay, the agenda is approved. Onto public comments, Madam Clerk, call the first commenter.
Yes, sir. Katie Manier. I guess I'm now getting top billing, huh? I want to make it perfectly clear to everyone here tonight. Our mayor, Mr. Scott Mann, you are a liar. Two weeks ago, a lady spoke about the need for more police officers in this city and you told her we could thank Jerry Brown for that. Well, I think we can thank you, really. All the new cities are crying the same sad song, Harupa Valley's crying the same song because the vehicle license fees were taken away. Maybe Jerry Brown knew, knew how to, knew you didn't know how to handle your own finances and decided the state was better equipped to handle the money than you are. Seems like you lied to the bank, you lied when you refinanced your house and put it up for short sale. We need someone in office that can handle the finances of this city. And if we have a financial manager, they are doing a rotten job and should be fired and replaced. This city has hired 13 new employees between 8/12 of 13 and 4/14 of this year at approximately $750,000 at the bottom pay scale. Some may not have started at the bottom level. We don't know where they started on this pay scale and that doesn't include benefits. We have an attorney we're paying $500,000 a year plus to write ordinances that aren't called for and to do your work and to write emails to people that they don't need to receive because they didn't get the original one. We have deputies now working 16-hour shifts and longer to keep up with the rising crime rate in this city and that's just going to keep increasing. When I moved here, there was no graffiti to be seen, there were no beggars on the street, there were no people with handouts on the freeways. We see all of that now. It's beginning to look like the slums in this city instead of a beautiful city. I imagine you lied about your background to get a risk management job with the school district. You can't take care of the risk to people's health and children's health in this city. So how are you going to do a job as a risk manager? I'd like to ask our deputy tonight, how many officers we could really hire in this city that we need desperately for $750,000 a year? And I do believe there were other people that were hired for code enforcement that isn't even on that list.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ron Page.
Hello, first I want to thank everybody for your service to the community because I know that you do care about the people here and you do deserve to be credited for that. I'm here tonight because I've emailed a few of you regarding the situation about Augusta Drive in the core of Sun City. I represent two homeowners associations who live on this street and directly around it who are tired of the cut-through traffic that comes through their street. It's like Cherry Hills too because instead of going to the light, people will just turn down our street. And the reason we moved here was because we retired and we wanted our environment. And that's gone away. Our environment's gone away over the years. I moved here five years ago. Most of my neighbors have lived here longer than I have. And they're mostly between 80 and 90 years old and so they don't seem to want to come out and speak to the city regarding a lot of these issues. I've received some emails back from some of you folks that I appreciate. I've also sent in an engineering department traffic control request form. And I want to submit a petition tonight formally from all the people that live on Augusta Drive that want the cut-through excessive traffic taken care of and to repair the street that has deep cracks on it from the constant traffic that comes on it every day. 90% of our traffic is people that don't live here, on our street. And it's nobody's fault, it's through habitual motorists that live right here in our city. So that's really all I wanted, I want to submit this. And so.
Do you have a copy of it, Mr. Page?
Yes, I do.
Okay, just give it to the city clerk.
Okay.
And then we'll get it to the engineer.
And once again, I want to thank you for all your work. I know that you guys work hard. I spoke to Mike, a judge who's in charge of the sheriffs and he will be getting a new officer, but I don't think that's going to take care of the problem. It may work on Cherry Hills Boulevard, but we need another solution because our streets were just repaired last year and they're already really cracked and every time tires hit them, they really make a loud noise even at 2:30 in the morning. So our residents are getting woken up at night. So I appreciate anything any of you can do for us.
Mr. August?
Yeah, Mr. Page, I'm aware of your emails. I'm also aware that you're very active in the community. I would like to ask Mr. Jonathan Smith from Public Works, and I know Rafael Martinez has talked to me about this and he's been working on it. Is there any possibl, I'm just suggesting this, it just came to my mind just this very second. Has anybody considered the possibility, if we do deem that there is a problem on Augusta Drive, and I have no doubt that there is, just put a sidewalk across, make it a cul-de-sac? Can we do that as a city? From, on Bradley?
Well, we'd have to evaluate that thoroughfare to make sure that the connections that were changing do not negatively impact emergency service vehicles.
It's a very small street, as you're aware.
Right, so we are taking a look at it and I'd like to just talk to you a minute before you leave here and we'll evaluate it and we'll follow up with Mr. Page accordingly.
Councilmember Furman?
Just to reiterate, there's a.
Hold on, sir, hang on one second. Councilmember Furman?
Also, Jonathan, is there a possibility to put a local traffic only sign or no through traffic sign on that street?
There are options for calming the traffic in the area too. We have some other ideas that we'll share with the team and find out what works appropriately in this situation.
I think Mr. Page would like to share some other things with you. So if we could go on with our other public commenters and you two, you can give him your ideas and we can analyze those.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker?
Ken Willhite.
Mr. Mayor, council, audience. A few council meetings ago, a fellow named Chris Saunders, an ex-marine, spoke from this podium regarding his attempts to start a paintball range off of Han Road. His presentation to the council piqued my interest, so I contacted him to get a few more details as to what went on. For his background, Mr. Saunders was a staff sergeant in the US Marine Corps and he served his country in both Iraq and Afghanistan. And in the service, he supervised up to 5,000 people. His five-year business plan for the paintball park projects $1.5 million in revenue just for the first year. His target market includes high school and post-high school youths who are currently underserved by Menifee's recreational choices. His park would create jobs for local youth. He's withdrawn his application. Initially, after he did his homework, city staff told me he would need a major site plan. He negotiated a little bit and they settled that he would need a minor site plan to prepare the site for his paintball park. He hired engineers who had done work in Menifee and they agreed that that was probably appropriate, that was the right thing. So he pulled an application, he paid his $2,500 deposit and he provided everything the city had asked for. When he had done that, he was told that he needed to deposit another $75,000 for a conditional use permit.
$7,500?
$7,500, did I say $75,000? My mistake. He was given no reason.
It wouldn't be $75,000, yeah, that's all.
He was given, or he claimed he was given no reason why a CUP was needed when a minor plot, site plan had been approved in the first place. And the only reasoning he got was that Charles Leclerc deemed it so. He was then told that he needed to make another $5,000 deposit, which would run his total for, just for the fees, up to $16,000. At that point, he was called to a meeting here at City Hall where they could talk about that. And in his estimation, he was treated rudely. His objections weren't really considered and basically he was told that's the way it is. Then after that, he was billed for the cost of the meeting. The problem is that this is one example out of numerous examples I've heard of City Hall dealing poorly with small business owners when we actually need more small business in the city to help the city's economics. He was told, as were many others, he was told to do one thing and then when he complied, he was told that the first instruction was wrong and he had to spend more money to follow the second instruction.
Mr. Willhite, that's your time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll have staff analyze that a little bit and see what might have happened.
Sure.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Eric Brown.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm actually here in regards to the same thing. After I heard about his application having to be withdrawn, it was really disappointing, to be honest, because frankly, people, we don't have anything here. You either go to college or you go the wrong path here. There's no job market, there's no capability. I mean, you can ask some of the kids that are out there, I'm telling you, they probably don't have a job that's in this city. And frankly, most people just want to leave Menifee. And I understand that many people want to support the Sun City residents because frankly, they are the loudest. But as most of you know, my job is to come up here and back up the youth. And in this case, we have a perfect opportunity here and quite frankly, it's a necessity to build this park. It gives, it generates revenue for the city. I don't think anybody would attest, like, would go against that. And the other side of it is, it provides within walking distance a recreational activity that is not inherently that dangerous. Safety precautions are taken into hand. There's not that much money that actually has to be paid forward to fix it if the equipment is brought in. And as far as I'm concerned, he wants to pay for it himself. This is something that we could get going. And I mean, when I hear those kind of estimations, I have to ask, where did the money go? I mean, you give those kind of numbers to somebody, where are $16,000 in permits? I mean, the last time I checked, to print out a permit, it doesn't cost $2,500. And you start to look around over at Lake Elsinore, Marietta, and $100 CUPs? What is going on in, with, well, I don't even know what department to call it. To counsel, I've heard your excuses over and over that you don't have, you don't know what's going on, staff handles it. Well, guys, they're your staff. This is something that the youth needs and I will fight wholeheartedly for it. I mean, he's, as you said, we are now a Purple Heart city, correct? Well, why not back up the veteran who wants to start his business up as much as the people who have fought before? He is the same kind of veteran that fought in World War II, Vietnam, Korea, he's an Iraq, Afghanistan veteran who wants to start a business in the city of Menifee. Be supportive, he's on your side. He wants to generate it here, keep the money in the city and it's going to benefit everyone. So please, I'm asking you to put pressure on to whoever is responsible for borrowing it out and get this done. It's something that we absolutely need, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next speaker?
Roxanne Thompson.
I'm sorry?
Roxanne Thompson.
I know, microphone. Somebody's glasses. I'm here to speak in regard to the shipping containers and they've been an issue for quite some time here in Menifee. And I had read that John Denver here, his main reason was the, A, found them unattractive and he worried about the devaluation of property values. And I understand, Mr. Denver, that you are a realtor and I appreciate your concerns for loss of value to property. However, Mr. Denver, I mean, yourself, you have to acknowledge that whenever you remove uses from a rural area, that it does devalue the property, be it the number of animals you have, or be it you have a shipping container or you want to restrict ag buildings. But that's why people came here, because they had these, they had the ability to do these things. And when you chip away and you chip away and you take from the property, you devalue our property values till there's nothing left. And the very thing that everybody loved about it's gone. And mayor, you said yourself, you were a good old country boy, you love the rural community. I'd really like to see some people back that up. I attended the planning commission meeting addressing the shipping containers and the commissioners, in their wisdom, they sent it back and they asked you guys to readdress it. They were then sent to other ordinances. Several hundred citizens came together and they put in an opposition to the ordinance. They also did an amendment to an existing Riverside ordinance, submitted it to the city by service legally. Rob Johnson, he assured us that it was in the packet for the commissioners and I want to thank Rob for that, he did do that for us. However, the proposed ordinance was never mentioned, it wasn't brought up, it wasn't addressed. And at this time, I would just respectfully request that the council place the item on the agenda, acknowledge the citizens for their attempt to be involved with the system and let's not make them victims of your system. We are, we just want to be heard. And I would just ask to be placed on the agenda with the container ordinance.
Thank you, Roxanne. Mr. Edgerton?
Rob, that's not a difficult thing to do, is it? Just put, they assumed apparently according to the lady at the diocese that this was being heard. They did present it at the planning commission, so why not put it on our agenda? I would ask for the council's support, but do you have any concern about adding that so we can at least evaluate them?
I don't have any concern. It was in the planning commission packet and it was mailed out to the public. It was in a tabbed section of the planning commission's last agenda. I don't know why they didn't consider it or look through it or read it, but you have the ability to ask for that to come back if you get a second and we'll bring it back for discussion for council.
All right, I'll make that request.
The, Mr. Furman?
I'm going to, I'm going to second that motion because I think, I think you have the flavor of the rural community and you think what they put together is the solution to our situation. So I'm going to second that motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Leclerc, do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir. The material she referenced was in the planning commission report. Even in the report, you'll note that there was reference to it and the comment that her concerns should be evaluated by the commission. In the staff report that's prepared for your public hearing scheduled for June 4, that same material and those same comments are already within that draft report.
With all due respect.
So did I hear you say, stealing Mr. Denver's phrase, did I just hear you say that this is, that this is already coming back to us on June 4?
Yes, it's already scheduled and the legal ad has been sent to the paper for publication.
Fantastic.
And may I say, with all due respect, it was not addressed during that meeting. I asked you, you said you were going to ask me a question, you never did. And furthermore, two of the council, two of the commissioners that I spoke to had no idea what it was, so.
Well, it sounds like it's coming to us on June 4 finally.
Thank you.
And make sure that you come back and address some of those issues when we hear it officially back then.
We'll be here.
I know.
Thank you.
And then so, I mean, it's been a long time coming. And I know that the commission has worked through it and the commission, I think, finally just said, okay, council, give it back to you. What do you want to do?
It didn't get back here easily.
Yeah, it'll be back here on June 4.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Peter Thorwath.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here as a member of the Menifee Lakes Homeowners' Association. First, I'd like to thank Jonathan Smith for taking a look at our streets over there. A number of them are really looking pretty ragged. We really appreciate your putting that on the agenda. Three, there was a meeting last night of the homeowners' association. I wanted to share three things with you. First, in case you heard rumors of many fish dying in that lake, it's completely true. So about eighty percent or more of the fish in Menifee Lake died, and they sent out many samples and tested the water for many things. There were rumors flying about the final resolution was, it was something that's not very common in California, something called golden algae. Golden algae somehow got into the lake and hurt the gills of many fish, and many of them have died off. So the water has since been treated for that, and they will be reintroducing fish over time and bring it back to normal. The second thing from the homeowners' association meeting was that there are, you may or may not have heard of this, men are apparently posing as landscapers, coming to homes unrequested and doing work that hasn't been asked for, and then they are banging on the door and insisting that the homeowner pay them for that work. So several people had heard stories of that, and one woman in particular, an older woman, had that happen to her. They insisted she give them six hundred dollars, and she was afraid they were loud, and she had no recourse except to pay them to get them to leave. So I'm asking for the police and the council to look into that type of abuse. Speaking of the police, for whom I have great respect, another repeated issue last night was the slower response time many have experienced, in Menifee Lakes, anyway. And whether it's trying to report drug dealers or other things, many have cited that the time the police were arrived has been really very slow, and by the time they get there, it's too late. So I'm hoping that some discussion can be made in terms of how we could have a phone number for Menifee's eighty-five thousand people, so we don't have to call Paris, even if it goes to Paris. Anything that will expedite bringing the police when there's an issue would be appreciated. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Lisa Sobek.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and staff. I am here tonight, about a month ago, nearly a month ago, April 26th, we had our second annual Menifee Better together. And it was a wonderful day in this, in the, in the city of Menifee. There were three projects, as you are aware of, going on that day. We had out habitat cleanup for twenty-six homes in the senior area of our core. We had the KBM Park Neighborhood Cleanup. We had the Quail Valley Neighborhood Cleanup. There were over four hundred volunteers that came out that day to put their arms together and their shoulders and get to work, and make a difference in our community. It was truly a beautiful morning. The weather was great. It was cool. Everybody worked hard. We had the mayor out flipping burgers. We had Tom Furman out driving in his own pickup, picking up people's trash and delivering it to the dumpsters. We had our city manager out with Alan Young, one of our staff, out doing the same thing, picking up trash. It was a wonderful day. And so, as a representative of the Menifee Interfaith and Community Service Council, I'd like to make a presentation tonight to the, to the council and to the staff of a collage, just as a, just as a little bit of appreciation for the great partnership that we had between the Interfaith and the city and Habitat for Humanity. And I just know that these types of projects will change one neighborhood at a time, and truly, our community, it will be a community where people really enjoy living because of the kindness of their neighbors. And I just will present this to our city clerk, and she can share with you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Councilmember August.
Well, we, I spend a lot of my time up here praising Lisa for all the work she does within the community, so I'm just going to go ahead and thank you again for, should have given us all a copy on the city council. It's very, very nice, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. That's very nice. Deputy Mayor?
Well, it's kind of backwards, isn't it? Counsel should be giving a proclamation to Lisa Sobek.
That's probably true. Next speaker, please.
Kelly Landford.
Good evening. I'm here as kind of a squeaky wheel, looking for a little bit of grease tonight. I've been having an issue with, my next-door neighbor has, among other things, some major sewer leakage that has spilled over into our backyard. And for two weeks now, I have been contacting the city of Menifee Code Enforcement and just about every other agency I can think of, including the EPA, the Health Department, Riverside County, Environmental Health Department, Sun City Fire Department, Hazmat, anybody I can try to get to pay attention to this, because I have zero use of my backyard, because there is literally twelve-foot-long puddles of raw sewage. Code Enforcement was out on last Monday, the 12th, and we were told that the neighbors were notified at that point in time that they needed to address the issue that day. Since then, nothing has been done. I've called the code enforcement officer four times and emailed him and received zero response. Last week, I was in the hospital having a baby and still trying to deal with this, and I'm kind of at the end of my rope here. So I was recommended by the Environmental Health Department that I speak with my local city council member and see if we can get a little attention paid to this matter. So here I am.
Mr. Furman?
Could you give us your address?
Yes, we live in the Hillpoint neighborhood on Moonridge Drive.
Hillpoint, off of McCall?
Yes.
Across from the hospital?
Correct.
Okay, so.
That's mine.
That's yours, Mr. Denver?
Yep.
And Mr. Johnson, can we, I mean, we have, for a significant rain event in Quail Valley, we have emergency pumping of septic tanks. I don't know if this is a septic situation that's leaching?
No, it's sewage.
It's raw sewage coming from somebody else's property?
Yes. Basically, in that neighborhood, you don't have a side yard on both sides. You just have it on one. So on the other side, we have our neighbor's wall, and Friday, the 9th, we reported the problem to the neighbors. There was a handyman there that day addressing other sewage issues. They had a huge flood in their house. They were ripping out carpet, all kinds of stuff, and he told us that he would notify the neighbors. The next day, we noticed our dogs became very ill. They were throwing up and had diarrhea and all kinds of things, and we notified the neighbor then and asked for the plumber's information. No response. The neighbors said that they had a plumber on their way. The handyman guy showed back up and said, yeah, it's a sewage leak. I can't handle this. The next morning, there was a plumber who came out and said, yes, it's a sewage leak. I can't handle this. Code Enforcement confirmed the same thing, told us that it would be handled within a couple of days, and we've received no further response from them.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Among all of the travails that you've had to deal with, is that little tiny thing back there yours?
That would be my baby girl, yes.
Well, welcome to Menifee.
Seven days.
Brand-new one.
Seven days old.
Already thirty-eight thousand dollars in debt by the federal government.
Yeah, well, pretty much.
Mr. Johnson, do you have some, something to add to this?
Yes, I'm going to have Jonathan Smith meet you in the lobby. We'll get more information. We'll work with the MWD. Maybe there's a connection issue there on the lateral of the house. We.
Spoke with the MWD. They said they have no liability in this.
Yeah, I wouldn't think anybody would have liability, but I'm looking at, trying to help you with solutions.
Everybody has pointed back to city of Menifee needs to handle it, so.
Yeah, there's not much liability we have on private property either, so, but Jonathan has significant experience in water and sewer issues.
That area is not on septic, it's on the sewage system?
Yeah, we're sewage.
Okay, then there has to be a break in the connection somewhere.
Sounds like it. All right, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Next speaker, please.
Richard Melrose.
Should I go ahead and give you some handouts right now?
Is it about the topic you've already emailed us about? Go ahead and give this clerk your document, sorry. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Richard Melrose. I'm representing Quail Valley Community Group. And as you know, last year, we fought to keep some properties commercial over there, but our thinking wasn't that one of them would become a pot dispensary. It just opened up a few days ago, and I know from your point of view, it's illegal business, so I know I don't have to convince you of anything, but I just wanted to put on the record that Quail Valley Community Group is definitely concerned, not from a principal point of view, as far as whether a pot dispensary is a good thing or a bad thing, but we do know it's operating illegally in Menifee. And from Quail Valley's point of view, not only the board, but we've gotten quite a few phone calls from residents, and I know that for every phone call you get, that represents quite a few people that are concerned. So I think statistically, I could say that the majority of Quail Valley is definitely opposed to that kind of a business being there. And I think mainly, you know, we fought pretty hard trying to clean up our reputation. It was a great place, and then it went downhill in the 60s and became known for drug problems, I guess in the 70s and 80s. Now our CSAs, we've got two dedicated deputies, because we are concerned about our area, and it's actually a very good area to live in now. We actually enjoy living there. This kind of a thing, we only have one other retail product business, and that's Circle K, so now this makes our second retail product business. We have other service businesses. As far as retail products, now fifty percent of our retail product is pot. So that doesn't do anything for our reputation, so I just wanted to put on the record that we are concerned about it. A lot of residents are. I'm sure a few residents are ecstatic about it. And, but that's, oh, and what I'm, what I gave to hand out is, I just got a letter today emailed to us from the previous owner of that building, just before she sold, she sold it, and now it turned into the pot dispensary, and she's very upset. She wrote a letter, and she also sent a link to the website that they have, and I'm giving you a copy of that, in case you're not aware of the website that this pot dispensary has. So just to make sure you have that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I did, Mr. Johnson, I just, I know this, I know that you're on this, staff's on this, and law enforcement is, I just want, how does, when we have a moratorium on storefronts, and we have a moratorium on mobile dispense, how do, how does this pop up under the radar?
Mayor Mann, we don't have a moratorium. We have an ordinance that prohibits this. We're beyond the moratorium.
We're way beyond the, we're in compliance with the law. I realize it's, so, the question, thank you for that correction.
That's correct.
The question is still the same. How does it pop up without us knowing about it under the radar?
They didn't ask permission.
They absolutely didn't ask permission, and it's obviously an ongoing code enforcement case. We are, we have contacted and are working with Captain Judge, Colin McNeen, Captain Judge, and our code enforcement team are working together. That's about the extent of what I can share now.
All right, thank you.
We are on it. We understand it, and we're enforcing it.
So you go, you go there to get the, get the munchies, and you go across the street to satisfy the munchies? Madam Clerk, do we have another speaker?
Not on public comments, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for your comments. Councilmember comments and updates. Any updates from last council meeting? I just want to share that last Saturday, May 17th, was a busy day in Menifee, and I had the opportunity to kick off the Menifee Half Marathon in partnership with the United Way. It was a great event, and everybody was worried about the air quality and it getting canceled on all the runners who participated. And I know that some runners, I think there was a total of thirty-five or thirty-eight people who had paid their registration fee but ended up not running because of it. And then we had the Relay of Life event for the cancer awareness and the American Cancer Society over at Paloma Valley High School, which was also a great event. And then the Arts Council of Menifee did a fantastic arts showcase over at the Countryside Marketplace, and I know a couple of us were able to attend those events, and I just wanted to let everybody know that I was there for those. Hearing no other updates, on to the consent calendar. Are there any modifications, or may I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second, please? Is there a second on the consent calendar? Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
On to our first public hearing this evening, Agenda Item 11.1, An Amendment to the City of Menifee Municipal Code Regarding Establishment of Standards and Criteria Applicable to Development of Designated Slopes, Hillslides, and Ridge Lines Within the Specified Areas of the City of Menifee. Mr. Johnson, is there a staff report?
Yes, there is, sir. Charles Leclerc has a staff report for you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The item for you tonight is, as was noted, a proposed ordinance to address hillside development. At the direction of the city council and to fulfill the goals and policies of the city's recently adopted general plan, staff created a draft hillside ordinance for consideration by the community, the planning commission, and city council. The purpose and intent of the ordinance is to allow development, therefore protecting property owners' rights, but to protect as well and to preserve the community's visual assets, common reference points, and notable landmarks. Staff and the planning commission has worked for more than six months on the creation of this particular ordinance. The last, the last time the planning commission considered this was at the regularly scheduled meeting of April 8th of this year. The material within the proposed ordinance would create an overlay district. That overlay district would apply to properties that have a fifteen percent or greater slope, over thirty-three percent or more of the recorded lot area. In addition to those two criteria, the planning commission asked for and eventually reviewed and approved and forwarded to you a map that shows specific areas where this overlay would apply as well. So you would have to meet those three criteria, the fifteen or fifteen percent or greater slope, over thirty-three percent or more of your recorded lot, and be within the areas designated for the overlay. The proposed ordinance establishes design and architectural standards and guidelines for the development of hillside properties. Standards are proposed to minimize the amount of grading, the reduction in building envelope, and to reduce visual impacts from buildings, driveways, roadways, and so forth. Grading for development, roadways, landscaping, drainage trails, and public safety are all required to conform to the contours of the land to minimize visual impacts and to preserve natural terrain. Many examples and illustrations are provided within the proposed ordinance to make it easier for property owners and developers to understand the criteria that they are being subject to. It is also essential to note that the proposed ordinance includes a new chapter that would allow for the density of development rights from one property to an adjoining property. This option would allow a property owner to leave property that's steep, as is, or minimize the development of that property, but still take advantage of the value of that property by selling development rights to adjoining properties. Would like to note that under SEQA, or the guidelines to impose SEQA, that the creation and application of new, more restrictive development standards are not subject to further environmental review. They are exempt under SEQA. That's the recommendation of the planning commission. Also like to note that although we include the overlay map in the planning commission's resolution, that's within your staff report on page 35, I neglected to attach it to the ordinance, so with the, if you introduce it tonight with, when it comes back under the adoption, that will be attached as part of the, of the ordinance. As I mentioned a moment ago, the planning commission held its last public hearing on this item on April 8th of 2014. The planning commission, on a four-to-one vote, adopted Resolution 14-172, forward a recommendation to the city council that you approve or find that the project is exempt from further environmental review, and that you approve Ordinance Number 2014-148, which establishes two new chapters within the development code addressing hillside development. And to emphasize, it's not just hillsides, but it's an effort to preserve the visual aspects of ridge lines as well. With that, I will attempt to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. Councilmember Furman? Councilmember Furman?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read from a previous staff report that you wrote, that there's no criteria that would have a virtual, no community, there's no, virtually no community benefit. A generalized map is also required, that the city does not have currently, with topographical information that would be used as a basis for a specific lot-by-lot delineation of appropriate properties. A detailed lot-by-lot map would, would involve extensive staff time and effort without providing a corresponding benefit to the community, okay, except for the fact that the property owner would have a prepared slope analysis. Now, I can see that the expenses are a very important situation in this, with the amount of work that staff and your, your other department would incur, would, would be in excess of one year to prepare all these reports and maps, and probably at a cost, Jonathan might be able to help me on this, maybe of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Does that sound in the ballpark, Jonathan?
It would take, it would take much resources to do a map such as what you're discussing. It's, so I, I don't know exactly what it...
Yeah, I'm very concerned with the cost that the taxpayers is going to have to bear on this bill, especially when there's been no permits issued, or no permits requested. And do you wanna, you wanna speak on the expenses, and you know, what you said there, the staff time and the extra expenses that's required to get this done?
The point of the staff report, and that part of the staff report, was to explain that if the city wanted to create a map that would identify on a lot-by-lot basis the topography of each of those lots, that it would be an excessively expensive situation. The map that you have in front of you for consideration is a generic map that avoids that expense. This gives staff the criteria, that if someone comes in with a piece of property that is in one of the circled areas on the map, we identify to them that further research needs to be done by them to identify whether or not the property falls under the criteria of the hillside overlay. That information is provided to the Engineering Division, and they tell us whether they agree or disagree with the evaluation. The material was written and designed in a fashion to avoid the expense that you're referring to.
So then you're, you're saying that your statement on excessive staff time and effort is incorrect, that's not true?
No, it's, it's very correct, it's very true. I was pointing out in that report that if the city chose to go that direction, it would be an expensive situation.
Okay, thank you.
But the map overlay mitigates that, hence the reason why you've presented that map.
Correct.
Are there any other questions of staff at this juncture? I, I have one, I just want to, as I reviewed the ordinance in the staff report, and as I went back and reviewed the Planning Commission meeting and the notice and the workshops, there's still, my concern from January is still my concern today, in terms of this ordinance impacting six or seven projects in the city that have already been approved and are entitled and have maps in place. Does this ordinance exempt those properties from, or, or does it accommodate those properties that have already been approved? Would probably be a better way to ask the question.
There are two answers to that. One is, if they're in a specific plan, language is already included, that would exempt them. Two, we are aware of that issue, and I failed to put the disclaimer that had been previously discussed in this ordinance. The city attorney has provided me with additional language from what you had considered previously, when you were considering the hillside moratorium, language that says, "These standards shall not apply to any project that was a city-approved tentative tract map or other entitlement in place that is consistent with restrictive regulations previously in effect prior to the adoption of the city's general plan update on December 18, 2013." My suggestion is to address the issue that you've raised, that we find an appropriate place to put this in the document or in the recitals, not the recitals, the, whatever the other part of the ordinance is called, so that it's clear that if it's the council's intention to exempt those individuals, that the language is in the record to do just that.
All right. Deputy Mayor?
Well, I realize that the city attorney wrote that language, but right now it's not in effect. And if this is a good ordinance for the general population of Menifee, that's what I want to support, not a group of out-of-town developers. You know, I'm, I'm prepared to make some modifications for people who own this property, for example, Menifee residents, some of them have a lot of acreage, you want to say, okay, if you've got a 10-acre cut, and you want to put one single residential home on a view site, you know, as long as a million-dollar home or whatever, fine. I think there needs to be a way to approach that. If I understand it correctly, there probably is, am I correct?
The language currently written does not include language of that sort. Obviously, if the council directs staff to create such language, we have the ability to create that and have it reviewed by the city attorney so that it's legally, so that it passes all legal criteria.
Well, again, I, I get, where I think we may have some agreement on this council, is that I get uncomfortable when we talk about one shoe fits all. And so I would want to know that with certain properties, that certain property owners within our city would have a right to say, hey, these are significant circumstances affecting me, and they're, if it's a hilltop house, you know, maybe we have some significant request for that, to have it upgraded. Obviously, you would have some sites like Bell Mountain, which are significant landmarks for the city, which would not be eligible for that. But I won't chew on that anymore at this time, but I would like you to consider what I've just spoken about, because apparently it's going to take some legal language to generate that. I thought we were already capable of that.
We are capable of that, but doing it off the cuff would be rather difficult.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's something I would want to entertain as a consideration at some point.
Councilmember August?
Just a question regarding the legal aspects of the exemptions, and I think the city attorney might want to chime in on this question. If we go ahead and approve this ordinance, whether we do or we not tonight, can we do it without the exemptions? Because down the road, it's either going to be, yes, you have to do it, or yes, you don't, or you advise us to accept them, or give us an option for that. Can we pass an ordinance tonight without those exemptions, and would you be comfortable with that?
The exemption that has been proposed goes to those projects that already have tentative maps that have been approved by this council, that were consistent with the general plan that was in effect before the, the new general plan. So, and there was some sense that, that because you have already approved those, that perhaps you would want those to stay as they are. And that's, that's what the exemption seeks to address. However, I think it's unknown whether, which of these, and whether they fall within the standards and the requirements of this ordinance. So yes, you could certainly approve it without the exemption, just the way it is, and just the way it was recommended by the Planning Commission, and then address that individually as projects come forward.
If the projects of the, the people that are asking for the exemptions don't meet the requirements, the parameters of the hillside ordinance, what happens then?
You mean if they are in conflict?
Yes.
In order to move forward, a project has to be, and get a building permit. A project has to be consistent with the general plan or with a specific plan that, that addresses it. So if they cannot, if we cannot find a consistency with the general plan, then they would be unable to go forward. They would, they could not get a building permit.
Even though they were previously approved?
Even though they were previously approved by this council.
Okay, thank you.
And so along the same lines, I thank you for that question, Mr. August, and thank you Deputy Mayor for yours too, because I think we're all kind of saying the same thing, really, because whether we keep the ordinance as it is tonight, or whether we add language to take care of the situation that Mr. Edgerton just mentioned, and what Mr. August was just talking about, what I think we need to do in the interest of fairness, though, is similar to how staff and the council, and the council has given direction to staff, and staff is working with rural business owners to help them still continue to operate, we need to kind of do the same thing, in my opinion, with these other, these six properties that have been approved. And that may extend to some large property owners that may have a need to do the same thing, so whether we add the language in, there needs to be some reasonable accommodation when those projects come forward, to have that considered, so that it's not adversely impacted on something that's already, that we've already approved, is my concern. Mr. August?
A question for you, Mr. Mayor, and this is just hypothetical for the time being, but if I agree with you that there needs to be some considerations given to the points that you've made tonight, would you be willing to pass the ordinance and look for those, address those considerations later?
I would be willing to consider it, yes. City Attorney, did you have something to add?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that tentative map, without it being a vesting tentative map, does not create vesting rights. It does create certain expectations within the building community, that they will be allowed to go forward based upon what the council has approved, but it's not a vested rights circumstance, which is why you don't have to exempt them. But it is certainly a policy call as to whether you want to, and whether, what that effect will have on the building community, on the development community.
We don't have to decide that tonight, though.
You don't have to decide it tonight.
Councilmember Denver?
I'm a little confused. Supposing that you have a property that's we approved, we, this council approved, and it does not, and they spent a hundred thousand dollars in fees and everything, to the point where we passed it, and then it's one degree off on something, and somebody decides that they can't move forward, do we give them back their money?
No.
Well, do, do they, I think what we ought to do, Mr. Mayor, is we ought to exempt those properties from this ordinance, and we ought to then move forward with any additional projects that come along, and they should meet the criteria here. Otherwise, I think this is very litigious, and, and I think this is, we have been accused, Menifee today has been accused of not being business-friendly and such, and this is a prime example of changing our minds in the middle of the stream. Now, if there's, if there's, somebody wants to take a look at these six properties and say, one of them is just outrageous, I have no prob, you know, goes up like in Lake Elsinore, a project that goes straight up the hill, and they put a housing tract on the top, I have no problem, but I do not know of any of these projects that are outrageous like that. These are all acceptable projects, I think, to this ordinance, probably, but I don't think we should be changing our minds in the middle, and I really would make that recommendation.
Before I call on any other council members, we are getting ready, at this point, we're just supposed to be asking questions of staff, and so if we get into the policy discussion amongst ourselves, we need to have public testimony first. Would you still like to speak, Mr. Edgerton, before we open the...
Well, yeah, because we've talked about being business-friendly, and I think the city should be business-friendly, but there's a fundamental difference between local businesses who provide jobs and amenities for the citizens, and outside developers who come in, who are speculators, and bless their hearts, I'm a big supporter of the capitalistic system, but these people are preparing to create site plans for high-density projects, and then they are going to flip them. They'll sell them to somebody else. So it isn't even something they're going to build themselves. So I certainly wouldn't support those exemptions tonight. I'll be willing to look at these things case by case.
Well, 2.5 to 5 dwelling units per acre is not high-density, and that's what those six projects are. Mr. Denver?
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I'm really getting tired of talking about people who own property in Menifee and calling them developers when they happen to live out of town. Most of the business owners in Menifee live out of town, most, half of the citizens in Menifee have people in their immediate family who live, live out of town. Let's get off of that. You must be joking.
All right. Are there any other questions from the council of our staff? Hearing none, I opened the public hearing at time 8:27. Madam Clerk, was this item properly noticed?
Yes, sir.
And have we received any additional correspondence for this item tonight?
There is one matter of correspondence sent to you, and in your red folders on this item, otherwise, no.
Okay, very well, at this point, do we have public speakers on this?
Yes, Your Honor.
Call the first testimony, please.
Shirley Vaughn.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Shirley Vaughn. I am a member of the Menifee Valley Historical Association. Our association supports a policy to protect the unique scenic beauty of Menifee for future generations by protecting the tops of hills at the ridge lines, the rock outcroppings, and the scenic highway corridor, which disallows billboards along the 215 freeway through Menifee. Several years ago, Menifee lost a large area of the tops of hills and huge rock outcroppings to bulldozers and dynamite in an area west of Marietta Road and south of Newport Road to developers. I have also driven south on the 215 freeway through Marietta, and have seen huge hills slowly disappear to nothing with bulldozers. To now my understanding, Bell Mountain, which derives its name by being shaped like a bell, may lose its unique bell shape to the bulldozers and developers. Out of the many hills in Menifee, Bell Mountain holds the distinction of being named because of its unusual bell shape. Historically, as early as 1921, Menifee pioneer Roseman Morrison wrote in a letter, "On the 22nd of February, the whole school went up on Bell Mountain. After a wearisome climb, we reached the top." Recognizing its place in Menifee history, and that it is a Menifee landmark, Bell Mountain Middle School was named after this distinctive bell. In the book Along the Old Roads, the author Steve Luck writes, "In the spring of 1891, J. H. Serrard lamenting to the Elsinore Press that no articles have been written extolling the virtues of the Menifee Valley. Therefore, he wrote his own and described the area as beautiful beyond description, grand beyond conception, is as Menifee country. The broad expanse of level land interspersed with buttes almost in regular order, with broad avenues lined between the hills, which vary in size, from little hillocks up to little moutlets, some of them with smooth grassy surfaces, some stony and some almost solid rock piles, but they are grand and beautiful." The Menifee Valley Historical Association urges this council to protect the tops of the hills, the ridge lines, the slopes, and the rock outcroppings, and make Menifee a beautiful and unique area in which to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ron Sullivan.
Good evening, members of the council. Ron Sullivan, a member of, or a resident of the city of Menifee. I wasn't going to speak on this tonight, but this was kind of a surprise. First, I would say I think this is a little bit, because there's a caveat here that says only if a tentative map has been approved by the city. You have a number of entitlements that have been done by the county that have been held just because of the economy, and I think these people, where you have it, you know... just because of the economy, and I think these people, where you have it, you know, are going to have a difficult time. The county ordinance, which you had approved as you became a city, did not allow hilltop development, so, and then their, their slopes was basically 25, not 15. We would probably ask, and I, I think it'd be wise of the council to ask, why does it go from 25 to 15? Because that's a significant difference. When you look at 25, and we testified earlier, the earlier Planning Commission meeting, when you look at the exhibits that was done by your planning staff, they are over-exaggerated. This says what can be done. You know, the, the slopes would look like they're 35, 45, and 55, if you look at it. You look at what is a 25% slope versus a 15% slope, and you'll have a better perspective on when you look at an exhibit, on what the difference is. The, the other was that you're gonna, you're gonna have an overlay zone that you've already identified. I think it's wise to at least send, you can identify those on a parcel-by-parcel basis and send out an advertisement that says, you know what, your, your property may have a problem, and you may want to then come and look at that before we get to the point that we have a whole lot of people show up. The property that I do represent, been here for a long time, you know, they, they own a lot of stuff here in Menifee, but they also did own this 250-some-odd acres. If we were to look at that even today, before it was broken up into three tracks, this exhibit wouldn't be a problem. But because we have three existing tracks today, there's one track that may have a problem. There may be another track that we're in for absolute final mapping, and if this ordinance goes in before Mr. Smith gets through, but he's doing a great job, don't get me wrong, but if it got through, we'd have to start over, after investing two and a half million bucks in engineering.
Mr. Sullivan, that's your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Next speaker, please.
Nathan Miller.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Nathan Miller. I'm here on behalf of the Building Industry Association. Our main concern is, obviously, the projects that have already been approved. I mean, what is the value of the council's word if you approve a project, and then you decide to put into place an ordinance that violates that approval and violates the word that you gave to those individuals of the projects that you approved, and then say that you're going to go back later on and consider putting in language that's going to exempt them, but there's no guarantee of that? That's not how business gets done. In any business, you need consistency in order to be successful. Without consistency, it's really hard to move forward. You, as council members, Mr. Edgerton, Mr. Denver, Mr. Mann, Mr. Furman, Mr. August, all told those individuals that have those projects that, that they are approved, that you are okay with them, and now you're saying that they're not? I mean, and you say there's a difference between developers and business, and other businesses. Developers happen to be one of the number-one job providers in the entire county, from the development, from the builders, from the people they contract with, and all the work that cascades from what they do. When the recession hit, the recession hit us hardest than any other county in the entire country because of the role that building and development plays in Riverside County. But regardless, I take you all as men of your word, and you gave your word to these individuals that their projects were okay with this city, and I would like to ask that you keep your word and exempt those projects that you already approved, and include that language before you pass it. You can't pass it and go back. That's not the right way to do business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next speaker, please.
Adrian Peters.
Mr. Mayor, I made a typo in my notes.
It was for the next hearing.
Exactly, thank you.
Next speaker.
That's the end of the speakers for this item, as far as public testimony.
Is there anybody in the audience that didn't put in a speaker slip that would like to speak on this item? Going once, going twice? Very well. I'll close the public hearing at time 8:36. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Well, once again, I do want to draw a strong distinction between development as a speculation and people who come in and are trying to run a business in this, in this town. You do want to be business-friendly to the people that are in this community. In fact, we, I think we charge them too high of fees. We should, we should be trying to generate more revenue, so they won't have to charge them those fees. When I represented Merrill Lynch, when I represented E.F. Hutton, I represented some major New York firms, put together some portfolios for some families, some of them very wealthy, some of them not so wealthy. We told them about the probabilities of what they would get for their relatives, for their retirement, for their schoolchildren, and then the stock prices came down, because that's what happens when you speculate. Some people, you tell them to be very conservative, they were probably okay, but some people wanted to make a lot of money, like developers. And I don't blame them. I love capitalism, but that means there has, there has to be winners and losers, and just because you buy that stock doesn't mean it's going to go up, and, and it doesn't mean it's going to go down. And to say that you put two and a half million into something and then it all went down the drain, that's to assume that the people in the audience don't understand anything about development, because that's not true.
Councilmember Furman?
First of all, a, to develop on a hillside is not cheap. I would estimate if you wanted to build a, a single-family residence on, on a hilltop or on a hillside with the grading, the environmental impact, you're, you're going to spend between one and $2 million, probably a half a million dollars just grading your driveway. So it's going to take some, a, a big-money individual to build on a situation like this. Now, to date, we don't have one owner-builder in this city, but there probably are people and we can attract individuals that would like to build a palatial estate on a hillside or even on a hilltop. So this ordinance is going to detract from that, those kind of people that we would like to attract here to come and live. The, the thing also that bothers me, I feel that it's a governmental taking of someone's property without compensation. If these hilltops are not going to be allowed to be built on by the property owners, then I feel that they should be condemned and the city pay for these hilltops if they want to preserve them. I'll stop right there for a second. I have more comments later.
Councilmember Denver?
A quick, quick question. If we have an ordinance now having to do with hilltops in any form or fashion, or with these hilltops? If somebody wanted to take the top off of Bell Mountain right now and run a driveway straight up the side, could they just do it?
They could not, because that would be inconsistent with the general plan goals and policies.
So we have an ordinance right now that affects those hills and hilltops?
Yes.
This one is just simply clearer and a little more restrictive?
Less restrictive. It's less restrictive in the fashion it gives you design criteria and architectural criteria that allows you to develop property in a manner that's consistent with the topography of the hillside. Yes, it does indeed restrict you from developing right on hilltops and right on ridge lines, but you can develop properties, you can develop those properties in a manner that is consistent with this proposal and still affords you virtually the same views and, and increase in value and so forth to the properties. And this gives a mechanism for an individual to transfer development rights to adjoining property, thus preserving some of their property value as well.
Did I hear you say that this ordinance is not a taking of, of property rights, is not a taking of property? A builder can still build or transfer or something, it's just a matter of more esoteric, aesthetic, in someone's view, building?
Correct. This is no more a taking than changing setback standards or parking standards or height standards on flatland.
On the other hand, the only part of this that's really a taking or offensive or using Deputy Mayor's analogy of you go in, you know, one town is, always says their words, if you go to another town and they give you an, or give you a permit to do something, you can do it. Only in Menifee is a town where when you get a permit, then you can't do it. But the, the point is, is that that's the only issue here. If we put this ordinance into effect and we exempt in writing now these six properties that already have been approved and meet standards right now, more strict from what you say, then that would be the issue. Those two things, am I speaking correctly?
You have the opportunity to include, and I would suggest in Section 912101, purpose and applicability, to simply place the language that the city attorney has offered as the third paragraph in that section, thus giving information right up front for those properties that the city has already considered, already given approval to, and gives staff and the community the information it needs to know whether the certain projects are exempt or non-exempt. It is up to the council, as commented on by the city attorney, until, unless you have a vested map or until you've committed certain acts, you do not have a vested map until you do certain things. So communities, all the time, create new codes, new standards that are applicable to people that are in the pipeline. It's not unusual at all for those cities to consider exemptions for those individuals, but it's also not unusual for the, the cities not to exempt for certain things. So it is a policy call on the part of the council. You have the language and you have the location in the ordinance where you could include it tonight if you so desire, and if, as Deputy Mayor Edgerton has suggested, that yet an additional consideration be granted, you can either continue this so that we can create language to deal with that, or you can have that as another topic, give guidance to staff, and then amend this code in the future to include that, that new language.
That'd be better than a fine.
Yeah, I agree. Councilmember August?
I, I'm going to address what Mr. Denver had to say, and I want to give him my reasons why I would take a different course than you just suggested. I, I do not want to approve an exemption if I don't know what's being exempted, and I don't think any of us right now know up here what is being exempted. I'm certainly willing to take a look at it if we should pass it after the fact, but if we do it after and we can get the guidelines and we can get whatever's being exempted and sit down with a developer and perhaps bring it a little bit closer to the guidelines, and maybe it's not there right now, that would be my, I, that would be, in my opinion, a better idea, rather than exempting something we know nothing about tonight.
Councilmember Furman?
I'd like to get a few things clear on, on the permit process that we just tried to establish here, that the expense of the staff and that stuff that we talked about before, you said it can be mitigated if an applicant would spend $20,000 worth of research to see if he could build on his hilltop, and then he would submit it to Jonathan, and then he would turn it down and say, "You can't build there." Is that the approach that we're putting our people into with this ordinance?
In the same manner that you would be required to do archaeological reports, paleontological reports, grading reports, soils reports, you are, by this ordinance, establishing another bit of information that has to be submitted to the city by the property owner in their proposal to develop land.
Right, so, the, there's, there's no way that a person could come to the city and say, "Can I build a house on this without paying the $20,000 to do the research and get an engineer and do the topos and everything?" There's no way that Jonathan Smith can give them that information that they can...
I would not say there's no way. When an individual property owner came to the city to do their initial due diligence on what the zoning of the property is, what they can do on that land, if they fell within the, the areas of the map that would identify that additional study were warranted, we do have some very rough topo maps that we could reference and see just how much, how close they would be, but yes, it may be a situation where they have to have an engineer go out there and do that map. I would ask Jonathan to comment on whether $20,000 is an appropriate fee for that kind of review.
What I'm, what I'm kind of relating to, there's, there's a number of properties that have been in the family for a lot of years, that they were going to hand down to their kids, or they were going to develop at a later date, that these properties that have been in the family for a long time. Now that their value of them, since the restricted development, is going to be a lesser value to their property with the additional expense in the development. Now, the comments before that you made, that you refuted, were wrong. We can have Jonathan address, can someone come to this city and get an opinion if they can build or not, without spending a chunk of money, and then getting turned down?
So if I understand your question, if an applicant that's within the area that's shown on this map as a reference guide for properties needing further information, engineering department does have maps or plans that an applicant can look at, however, the applicant, the onus would be on the applicant to show that the property, the average slope of the property where they want to develop, has a percentage of the slope that's less than 15%. I cannot make that determination for them. They would have to do it and submit it, and then we would check the information that they provide us.
Okay. Just one more scenario. If we were to deny this ordinance tonight, would the application process be simpler for the applicant to build on a hill, on a hillside?
It, it would be simpler, because the general plan would not be able to be satisfied, and we'd just have to say, "There's no development."
Did you say, "No development"?
Correct.
General plan already says, "No development on hillsides"?
It says, it, you, the goals and policies of the general plan identify the preservation of ridge lines and sloped areas and so forth. We would have to ultimately make a judgment call, which would probably have to be supported by the council, as to the extent of that, but in its broadest terms, the goals and policies of the general plan would not allow staff to make a finding of consistency with the general plan in order to allow development to go forward.
All right, so then we made it twice as difficult for the applicant.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
What, what I would like to do is see if we can generate a consensus on this, Council, which we maybe not be able to, but possibly we can. I agree with Councilman August. I'm not prepared to provide any exemptions tonight. On the other hand, perhaps these need to be looked at case by case without charging them more money, and I'm not prepared to let somebody build on a hilltop tonight. But I think Councilman Furman made a very good point. There may be circumstances in this city where we have people who have owned property, do own property, and, and it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't disagree with the concept that the Planning Commission passed in trying to protect our hilltops and hillsides. So I, I, you know, I'll, I'll see if it passes. I'd like to make a motion to lay this over and send it back to staff and ask if... I'd like to make a motion to lay this over, and send it back to staff, and ask if we could proceed with this particular project we have before us, with mitigating measures so that there is more flexibility in being able to generate a case-by-case basis. For example, Audi Murphy will come up here later tonight. That created a big split on this council. We argued, and we fought, and screamed and yelled, and, but we ended up working with Audi Murphy, and it ended up being a better project. They were very cooperative, we'll talk to that later. But I'm sure of those six projects, there might be an opportunity, again, for the council to agree, rather than stand up here and, and agree to disagree tonight. So, I'm just going to make a motion to lay it over, to request staff to modify what we have before us tonight, so that the council will have more latitude, and applicants will have more latitude in mitigating the measure case by case in the future.
The council will have latitude, or he would have?
Well, he would have latitude, but the council then would also have the latitude, so we don't get bound up in this one shoe fits all. Because I think you would agree that that is not the case. There may be a circumstance where you and I would agree that somebody ought to be able to have a mitigating circumstance, whereas in a general sense, maybe I wouldn't approve, but in that specific sense, I'd say, "You're right."
Councilmember August?
I'm going to disagree with my, with Mr. Edgerton, because I think if we ask Mr. Leclerc, I think he can tell you that there is flexibility in this plan. There is latitude for people. We, this is the same thing that's happened to us before. You're going to create a situation where you're going to identify 1,000 different mitigating circumstances. You have to give the staff, and the council, and the planning commission the opportunity to mitigate as we, as we go along. You can't build all those into the plan. So I would disagree with you, and if you're going to make a motion, I'm going to make a substitute motion, and I'm going to, I'm going to...
You've got a second here.
No, I said, if the opportunity comes, if he makes his motion, I will make a substitute motion. I would like to pass the ordinance, as the planning commission recommends, and without the exemption, to consider the exemptions later. That would, I'll do that if you make your motion.
There is a motion on the floor from Mr. Edgerton to continue this item, to add language into the ordinance that satisfies these requirements, and gives some flexibility to staff and the applicants to be in compliance with, with the general plan, and with this ordinance as it's currently drafted. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second on that?
Can I ask a quick question on it?
Yes.
Then I will second it, depending upon the answer of the question. And that is, did I hear Mr. Edgerton say, "Do you accept, does Mr. Edgerton, do you accept the idea that what he's going to do, someone on staff is going to do, is look at the six projects, and see if, rather than what a fellow councilman is saying that we're going to put in 1,000 mitigating situations, we're just going to look at those six projects and say, 'These are the mitigations we're talking about, and the changes there.'" He may come up and say, "Well, these four fit the standard just fine. This one is 16 degrees instead of 15 now, that's okay because of where..." But he's speaking of those specific issues, rather than, in general, exceptions forever.
Well, no, I, I would like to see if, if Mr. Leclerc can come up with some modified language that, that does give us a general approach, that we can look at those six, but more than that, there may, something may came up later that Mr. Furman brought up in reference to a hilltop, or whatever. What kind of language can we generate that would add flexibility to the very thing that we're passing tonight, that would give staff some opportunity to have more options in fitting the broad policy of the council? Because I, otherwise, we're going to get into this situation tonight, you know, never mind any of these six, let's, let, we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to do a special favor for six developers, or, "That's unfair, we're going to help these six developers." And I'd like to avoid that kind of a bind. That's what we ended up with Audi Murphy. So, this is a hail mary, pass to you, Charles. Have I asked for something that is going to be profoundly complex, or is there a possibility that you can come back with some mitigation, where we can talk these things over case by case, if we need to?
It's not unusual in development codes to have provisions in that code that allow for some flexibility that does not rise to the level of a variance application. They're called various different things, but, yes, there are ways to craft specific language that can be identified within the code that removes the arbitrariness of that flexibility. The difficulty for me is time and creating the specifics, so that we avoid as much arbitrariness as possible. But, yes, we can, we can craft language and offer it to the council, if that is the direction the council wants staff to go.
Good. And I like that. My other concern, however, and the concern that's part of the council, is that it doesn't become prohibitively expensive.
Your judgment, judgment analysis.
I understand that. Depends on how you define prohibitively expensive.
Well, it's not my money, I could start there and say, "Then it's great," but, no, I'm trying to empathize with the other side here.
Right. I take it on, in two different ways. One, the cost to the city to create this language in the first place, and, two, what a developer or a property owner may need to do in order to demonstrate its conformance with those standards that would be created.
Well, okay, I'm going to stick with my motion, as, as, and as the mayor described it, and what you're saying. And when it comes back, and let's see, after Mr. Leclerc works it over, maybe we've got mo, room to, to agree here.
I think that's a marvelous idea.
I'll second, I'll second the motion for purposes of going on to another issue.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor with, to continue this item for staff to...
Can I make a substitute motion, Mayor?
You may make a substitute motion.
Of course, you're making comments.
And I, and I would, and I want to touch base on chiming in with Mr. Edgerton. Let me ask Mr. Leclerc this question. You spent six months on this, how many public hearings have you had? And, and I know you're going to say more than one. And during those public hearings, have you heard anybody from the audience get up and disagree, you know, in a big way, with what the planning staff accomplished with this ordinance, or where they've written it?
There was quite a diversity of opinion on it. There was not, that I recall, a, someone from the six tracts that have been approved that came to the planning commission and raised a particular voice.
Were there any people from those six tracts where the overlays would affect the property that came in and said, "I like that"?
No.
There was none?
None.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to, do you think this is a good ordinance way that came out of the planning commission? Do you think it's good?
I believe it's a good ordinance, and I believe the planning commission, by its vote, illustrated its belief that it's a good ordinance as well.
Okay, then I'll, ready to make my motion.
Proceed.
And my motion will be, I would...
Substitute motion.
This is a substitute motion, I'm sorry. I'd like to make the substitute motion, that we approve the, the introduction of ordinance number 2014-148. In other words, pass that which was recommended by the planning commission. That's my substitute motion, I'm asking for a second on that.
Thank you, Mr. August. Is there a second on this motion?
No exemptions at all.
Not at this time, Mr. Denver, but I certainly would be able, in all honesty, to be able to look at them later.
The, I want to summarize, your motion is to pass, excuse me, your mo, your substitute motion is to introduce this ordinance as presented by staff tonight.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? Is there a second on that motion? Going once, going twice, that substitute motion fails, for the lack of a second. Onto the continuation motion, as motion by Deputy Mayor, and as seconded by Councilmember Denver, to lay this one over, give staff an opportunity to craft some language that can, because I sense that there's, we're nearly in consensus with some of these issues up here, and I think we can get there with some of the things that Mr. Leclerc has suggested, and as Mr. Edgerton offered, and a couple of the other comments up here by us. Is there any more discussion about this continue, continuation motion? Mr. Furman, your, your light's on, do you wish to speak to the continuation?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions to Mr. Leclerc, if I can take them.
Okay, we will, before we call the roll on this continuance. Mr. Furman?
There's, there's two things, Mr. Leclerc, I'd like you to clarify, or whether you agree with or not. Your statement that it's virtually no community benefits, are you still standing by that statement?
That's taken out of context from the report. That was in reference to the, having the city create...
You wrote the report.
Yes, sir. And taken in context, it's in reference to a suggestion made that the city create maps that identify lot by lot, topographic information.
Okay. So, in, in that respect, Jonathan Smith is going to have to do no work on any kind of mapping?
No, the engineering division is not going to do any work in regard to the creation of this ordinance. They will have to review maps that are submitted.
Okay, but this is all written out of context, where you said that they'll have to create a TOPO map.
Correct. The staff report identified and responded to the suggestion made that there should be topographic maps of all affected lots within the community.
Well, it, it says your staff would have to do it.
Correct.
On your report, so that's incorrect.
No. The, the comment was made by, I believe, a commissioner, but the comment was made to have topographic information on a lot by lot basis created as part of this ordinance. I responded to that in the staff report, stating my opinion that to do that would be expensive, and that it would not be proportionally beneficial to the community for the cost in doing that.
Okay. So that won't have to be done now?
That will not have to be done now.
You hear that, Jonathan? You don't have to do any mapping. You happy, I've got all the burden off your back.
City Attorney?
Just to note, as you're voting on this, the delay, of course, will maintain the status quo, which means that things will still not proceed, until there, this comes back.
For two more weeks.
Maybe.
However long it takes.
Well, I'd like to, first, I'd like to make a couple of comments about this, because I'm in agreement with the Deputy Mayor's motion, as seconded by Councilmember Denver. I think we can get there. I, I wish Chairman Leesmeyer was here tonight, because I talked to him earlier today, and I said, and, because I didn't notice in the staff report, we talked about it already, that the planning commission did not consider the items that Mr. Edgerton brought up tonight, as well as the potential to exempt projects that this council has already approved, since this council was seated. And so, he, he said, "Ah, we didn't, we didn't address that, Mr. Mayor." So, in, in deference to the planning commission, they did a marvelous, marvelous job. Staff did a marvelous job. I mean, from the time we passed the general plan on December 18th, all the way to where we're at today, there has been substantial public testimony, there's been substantial staff effort, and from the planning commission. So, I just want to thank all of you, and if we, if this continuance motion passes, taking a little bit more time for us to get consensus on this issue, I think is a wise decision, and I want to thank you for your leadership for suggesting it. Mr., excuse me, City Attorney?
Yes, just to also note that you do have, as the council, of course, the authority to modify anything that the planning commission has presented.
Of course.
So continuing it and all that doesn't require re-noticing of, of the matter. It will need to come back, you have to continue the public hearing, however, to do that.
Even though I closed the public hearing?
Yeah, you should reopen it, and continue it open.
Okay. Do we need a modified motion from Mr. Edgerton to do that? No, I sense not, because what we'll do is, if the motion to continue passes, I'll reopen, and that'll be part of the continue.
Exactly.
Councilmember August?
One more question before, before we vote, and I would like, I want to ask you one question, Mr. Leclerc. Do you have any idea of what Mr. Edgerton's asking you to do, as far as putting language in there that meets several, how many ever different circumstances? Do you have an idea where you're going on this?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. If you mind giving me an idea, just so, depend on my vote, where would you start?
You examine whether, you examine what the potentials, you have to consider how the standards would affect specific properties that have already been reviewed, so, and approved by the city.
That's not what, excuse me, that Mr., that has to do with the exemptions, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Edgerton's talking about a whole different bunch of people.
Correct.
Let, let Mr. Leclerc answer Councilmember August's question.
I also understand that there is another aspect to this, not only those tracts that have already been considered and approved, but that there be some kind of language created that would give a mechanism for staff, planning commission, or city council, depending on how it's written, to, under circumstances X, Y, and Z, to make a, to move away from a strict application of the language that's proposed here.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? With your item, when you reopen it, and you continue it to a date certain, I want you to know that on June 18th, that I'll be in Kansas.
Okay, so, well, let's see how the vote goes on the continuance, before we worry about continuing it to a date certain. But, but your out-of-townness is noted. All right, is there any other discussion on the continuance of this? Madam Clerk, call the roll. This is, could you restate the motion, just to be sure?
Yes, sir. The item will be continued to a date certain to be determined, and request that staff go back and evaluate putting in certain exemptions to return to coun, to council with, on, not only the ones that are in the pipeline now, but also in certain other circumstances.
Such as larger plant, individual landowners in Menifee?
Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor, is that a summary, a good summation of your...
Right, or, or a greater latitude in, in, in staff's ability for mitigation.
In that motion, Mr. Leclerc, do you have what you need from the council to execute our intent if this is approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay, call for the roll.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye. To the matter of, before I open the, open the public hearing, in order to reopen the public hearing, in order to continue it, is there any, is there a recommendation from staff for a date certain?
No.
Yeah, Mr. Traveler?
I will be back at the end of June, so any meeting in July is fine.
So, the first, with the first week, excuse me, the first meeting in July, work?
July 2nd.
July 2nd, is that the date? Okay, very well. I am reopening this hearing at time 9:09, for the purposes of continuing this hearing to a date certain, which is July 2nd, 2014, with direction from council to staff to bring back the language as discussed tonight. And with that, do we need a recess, a 10-minute recess? We are stand recessed until 9:20. Plan Amendment Number 5, Change of Zone Number 2012-094, Tentative Track Map Number 2012-131, and Tentative Track Number 2012-142. City Clerk?
Sorry.
You have, you pushed the wrong button.
I...
Councilmember Furman, do you have a question before we take the staff report?
I do have a, I do have a question of the city attorney. I was in contact with the FPPC on, on Monday, or on Tuesday. They no longer use the 500-foot rule to determine a conflict of interest, so is there any other reason that I would have a conflict and not be able to speak on this item?
They, let me think. They, let me think. There has been a change, but I, I'm not certain that they've totally eliminated that.
That was it, yeah. I had clarification yesterday. Her name is Cynthia, she's one of the attorneys up there.
If they've cleared you, then you certainly can do what you choose.
All right, thank you.
Well, and as you have stated before, Madam Attorney, that even advice from you or from the FPPC, it's up to each one of us individually to accept or, and recuse or not, and we're all responsible for our consequences thereof.
I'll be glad, I'll be, I'll check the current rules, too.
All right, very well. Mr. Johnson, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Charles Leclerc has a brief staff report for you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We have a PowerPoint presentation, which is unusual for me, but I'll do my best. As the Mayor just commented on, this is a specific plan amendment, a change of zone, and two tentative track maps. You have looked at this project previously, that was on March 5th, and there were some issues that you wanted resolved, and we understand that the applicant and staff and members of council have discussed and made suggestions for changes to this development that would achieve and address the issues that had been raised. The specific plan amendment proposes a fifth amendment to the Audi Murphy Ranch specific plan. The specific plan amendment would reduce the overall number of residential units within this specific plan area by the 33 shown that are here. It would reconfigure some of the planning area boundaries, it would modify some of the lot sizes, and it would create new or recreational amenities for the development. The zone change is necessary in order to allow the changes to minimum lot sizes that are proposed. This is a map showing the entire Audi Murphy specific plan area. The areas that are involved in the issue tonight are more the, are, in fact, the upper left-hand side of this and the area just below that. The proposed, the issue that was of paramount concern at the last City Council meeting that resulted in the continuance and the discussions with the applicant, who has been cooperative and suggested and made certain changes to the development, is that the council wanted additional 10,000-plus square foot lots and a reduction in the number of smaller lots. The suggestion was also made for the creation of gated community, or gated communities if more than one would have been possible in the design. The applicant has worked with the staff. The area that is shown here, that's circled in red, is an area that is now proposed to be 10,000-plus square foot lots, 74 of them in all. The configuration is such so that you can have three entry points that will be gated for this particular portion of the specific plan. This is a summary of the lots, the previous specific plan, that the proposal as shown to the council on March 5th, and the current proposal of May 21st, showing the change in lot configurations, and most notably, that you have a reduction in overall total number of lots of 33. This is simply an illustration of one of the areas, the tract 36-484, that is proposed to be reconfigured to go up in lots by three to 109, and this is the other larger tract, 36-485, which will reduce the number of lots overall, again noting the area that will be the gated community, which would be on the upper left-hand portion of this illustration. This is the, the previous configuration showing 141 lots in that area, 17 of which were 10,000 square feet or larger. This is the proposed new configuration, 115 lots, 74 of which are 10,000 square feet or larger, and again, this would be a gated community. This illustration shows the specific breakdowns of lots that have been changed from the 5,000 to 5,500 category, 5,500 to 6,000, so on and so forth, with the most important one being the 10,000-plus square foot category that moves up, having an additional 59 lots in that category. In total, for the gated area, there are 74 lots greater than 10,000 square feet. What is recommended before you tonight is that you conduct the hearing and receive public input, that you introduce ordinance 2014-138 approving the specific plan amendment, that you introduce ordinance 2014-139 approving the zone change, that you adopt resolution 2014-355 approving the, 355 and 356 approving the two tentative maps. With that, I will attempt to answer any questions you may have, questions that I cannot answer. We have Russell Brady, the staff planner that has been working on this project, and we do have the applicant in the audience that would like to take a couple of minutes and give a presentation as well.
City Attorney?
Just as an update with regard to the FPPC, there has been a change, but it does not take effect until May 31st. That said, I'm sure that what they've told Mr. Furman is probably correct, that they're not enforcing the 500-foot rule. There are a variety of other rules, however, that apply, including reasonable foreseeability and reasonable concern about the impact. I assume that Mr. Furman has obtained counsel on that, and whatever his decision is, he will live with the consequences.
You have been so advised, yes?
Aye.
Okay. Council, do we have any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Hearing none. The public hearing is open at time 9:27, and at this point, Madam Clerk, this was properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor.
Have we received correspondence on this item?
No, Your Honor.
And with that being said, we'll have the applicant come speak first. Mr. Peters?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Members of the City Council and staff. I'm Adrian Peters with Brookfield Residential, and I'm certainly happy to be here this evening. Two and a half years ago, we began the planning process with the staff and the engineering team to bring forth some modifications to the Audi Murphy Ranch specific plan, and Joel Morse is going to walk you through some of the more technical details in a few moments, but I sincerely wanted to express my appreciation to staff's hard work over the last two and a half years, and to also express, over the last two and a half months, the feedback and collaboration that we engaged with, with Members of the City Council to improve what I believe was a good plan and making it even a better plan. And we think that the changes we're bringing forth tonight are going to further allow some segmentation into the marketplace that we think is going to allow a broader array of lauding and housing and price points for prospective home buyers and merchant builders to come to town. So, we're definitely very excited about that. We believe staff did a really fine job in their analysis. You know, we were here two and a half months ago, and a lot of questions were raised, and we put on our thinking caps and collaborated and cooperated, and staff spent the past two and a half months really thoroughly evaluating our land plan, looking at our gating concepts, looking at the grading, looking at the lot sizes, double and triple checking the numbers, making sure the densities are what we said they were going to be, and so we commend them for that, and we concur with their findings, and we concur with their conditions of approval. I also wanted to thank EMWD, the Pachanga Tribe, and our consultant team for collaborating and working with us on these many different technicalities to, you know, make this a viable proposition moving forward, so I want to thank them for that. As Charles mentioned, we did increase the 10,000 lot count in the overall project. In fact, there's 164 lots of at least 10,000 square feet now north of Salt Creek, so that's definitely an uptick, and again, it's thinking will allow for builders to, not just in that gated enclave, but in other planning areas, to offer some larger lots for prospective buyers, so we're kind of excited about that. Joel, we'll get into a lot more detail about some of our changes to the, to the open space and other amenities, so I won't dwell on that much longer, but again, we're very happy to be here, and we appreciate the feedback and the collaboration and the real good dialogue that we had. I think we spent a lot of time on it, a lot of soul-searching, and we think we found a real good compromise, and we're happy with it, and we look forward to any questions that you may have this evening, and certainly, we would appreciate your affirmative vote this evening. So, I'm going to turn it over to Joel, who has a significantly briefer presentation than we had the last time, so.
Joel? Mr. August, do you want to ask a question now before the other speaker?
I'll ask Mr. Peters this, because I, I know he has the answer right on the tip of his tongue. You made a, you made a statement that it's, you feel that it's a better lot now because there's more 10,000-square-foot lots, and I, and I would guess that you mean because there's a gated community up there. Would you say that's true?
Well, certainly adding a gated enclave to the project certainly adds a certain marketability and prestige. It also attracts a different merchant builder in here. We might find that builders that might not be attracted to Audi Murphy in the past because of a certain price point or a certain lot size, perhaps a custom builder, you know, for example, might be inclined to show interest in our property, and so that helps the array, it helps the segmentation. It certainly might help to increase the lot values and ultimately the price points of the home. So, from that regard, we think it's a, it's an addition to the plan.
That's a good regard, right?
Yeah, I concur with that, yes.
Okay, and also, I would like to thank you for cooperating with the staff and showing, you know, the willingness to go along with the council, and I do want to, I'm just going to say this right now, I want to thank Mr. Edgerton for all the input he made on it as well, and to your staff and our staff, and I'm not going to say anymore on it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Joel Morse, TMB Planning, 17542 East 17th Street, Tustin. As Adrian mentioned, this is an abbreviated presentation, just to highlight some of the changes since the 5th, since the last time we met, and to give the Members of the public that were here an overview of the project so they're also well-informed about it. As Adrian said, overall, the team believes that the project has been improved as a result of the conversations we had since March 5th and in the intervening days. As everybody probably knows, this is an existing community, there are approved maps, there are also final maps, there's been graded maps, and there's also existing homes in some of these areas. The approved specific plan, generally Amendment Number 5 modifies the plan in that northeast, northwest area, and I want to just highlight the changes. As the Clerk mentioned, the community has 33 fewer lots today than it did two months ago. We reduced the overall density of the project from two acres, two units per acre to 1.9 dwelling units per acre. The residential density was also decreased from 3.9 dwelling units per acre to 3.8 dwelling units per acre, minor, but still a reduction. As indicated, we reduced the number of 10,000, excuse me, we increased the number of 10,000 square foot lots, actually, it's by 62 percent from 103 to 164, and created that gated community, reduced the number of minimum 5,000 square foot lots, and reduced the number of 5,500 square foot lots. So, they're all, the lots are all larger than they were two months ago. However, if you look at this approved plan versus the proposed plan, again, the overall concept of the plan hasn't changed that much, so it's relatively minor tweaks to the plan over the past two and a half years. The areas of modification, again, in northwest with these two track maps. The impetus of the original specific plan amendment, the impetus of the amendment in totality was really the need to try to recapture some of the lots that were lost during the dedication of open space and the enlargement of some parklands on the south of Salt Creek. That was what the driving original impetus to the specific plan amendment was. The approved number of units was 2190, it's now 2157. We got back some of those lots, but not all of them. What the amendment does is improves the segmentation, which, what it does in practical terms is increases the variety of product available, which increases the types of housing opportunities that are available, and increases the types of residents that can, that can live in the city of Menifee. One of the things that's key to keep in mind is that the proposed amendment did not introduce a smaller lot size than was approved previously, it merely infilled with some larger lots and created more segmentation and more opportunities. Again, the average lot size, one of the things I want to emphasize here is although the minimum lot sizes are what we use for the zoning purposes of the, of a specific plan amendment, it's key to keep in mind that in actual fact, the average lot size in every one of these areas is significantly larger than the minimum, more than 10 percent in all cases, and in fact, there are no 5,000-square-foot lots and no 5,500-square-foot lots north of Salt Creek, none. So, everything is greater than the minimum. Staff covered this area here, this is where the changed lots were relative to the gated community and the addition, or reduction in the number of 5,000 and 5,500 square foot lot. This is exactly where they occurred. Staff showed this map, so we'll labor the point. From a recreation standpoint, the specific plan amendment did add a new 1.5-acre park in Planning Area 1, in the northeast corner of 1, Planning Area 1C. The new plan does increase the size of the park in Planning Area 30 by one acre, increase the size of the park in Planning Area 31 by about one acre.
Yeah.
And increase the size of the park in Planning Area 39 by about a little over a half acre, and I understand Park in PA 39 is being dedicated this weekend, so congratulations to the city for that wonderful park being operable. So, what did we do? Well, we reduced the number of homes from 2190 to 2157. We expanded the lot segmentation, and that really provides more opportunities for housing to a wider variety of folks in the city of Menifee, which in turn, actually, from a practical standpoint, creates a more vibrant community. It increases the number of lots greater than 10,000 square feet by 62 percent, provides a new fire station site, increases the parkland by 4.2 acres, increases open space by 18 and a half acres, provides six miles of trails, increases riparian floodway areas by 14.9 acres, and provides, and provides regional sewer infrastructure. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of applicant's team? Mr. Furman?
I'm very happy with the plan, but there's one little problem that I think we have to mitigate. If you look at your, the track map that's, the one you had to read, Johnson.
Mm-hmm.
Going into Quail Valley right there, it's a road going into Quail Valley. The trail system is on the west side, and you have the trail system coming into Quail Valley on the east side. So, the mitigation that I'm asking for is one of two things. Either make a crossing at Audi Murphy Street there and go to the west side of Getz Road to connect with the west side trail, or make a push-button crossing going into Getz.
If you don't mind me jumping in and answering that question-
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't mind that, for sure.
Yeah.
Don't go anywhere.
Yeah.
What I would, what I would recommend is that we, we understand the point, and I think there's, I think there's ways to accommodate it. We could have, an idea that I have is having a push-button trail at the fire station lot, since that would need to be controlled anyway, and that would be at the immediate connection point between Quail Valley and Audi Murphy Ranch. So, rather than coming partially into Audi Murphy to the intersection of Murphy Ranch Road, we have it a little further north. So, we could work with engineering to integrate a, you know, a raised equestrian trail button at the fire station site. We could agree to that.
That'd be wonderful mitigation, I like it.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. I just wanted to share with you that Adrian, Mr. Peters and I did talk about that, and one of the concerns was making sure that we could go behind the fire station instead of front, in front of the fire station, so I think we've already got something in the works there.
Okay, very good.
Are there any other questions from council of the applicant? Hearing none at this time, knowing that you'll have a chance to come back to the podium, do we have any other public testimony?
Yes, Your Honor. Ron Sullivan.
Members of, Mayor, Members of the Council, Ron Sullivan. I was here when this thing got sidetracked the last time, and I just wanted to point out, there's, you know, there's some economic benefits and some dis-benefits from losing the, what I at first said was, my figures was 35 lots. some dis-benefits from losing the, what I at first said was, my figures was 35 lots. And it's actually 33, but for two lots here, you're going to lose $372,000 in transportation fees from the old map to this map. You're going to lose another $200,000 in fees that come to the city for the other development type things, which is parks and library and some of the other things. You will also then affect, because other special districts use the general plan from all cities to determine what they want for buildings or infrastructure. So the schools are going to lose $360,000 in fees just for the high school. I don't know exactly what it is for Menifee Union, but it's probably at least half that, if not a little more than half. And other special districts, and at least one special district that I'm familiar with is a water district, and they're going to lose $480,000 in fees that will no longer be available for this. Plus the fact that you're not going to make up losing $114 million in assessed valuation. Plus the fact that you're going to lose 35 families that generate tax revenue. So those are some of the things that, even though you may have a very fine development here, but at the outset, you had staff and the planning commission recommending what was there before you. So that there is a cost for what you may believe that you have made an improvement. So I wouldn't want to go away without saying that, you know, there's about $1.7 million that will never be available for other public benefits here. And that's gone. So whenever you make decisions like this, it affects more than just you sitting behind the dais. It affects other agencies that support the city, that are here to serve the city. That's my only comment. And I support the project.
Mr. August?
Mr. Edgerton, want to make a comment?
You were first. You were in the queue first.
I want to make a little bit of a comment. I'll be coming to your meeting tomorrow night, Mr. Sullivan. And I really, I do appreciate your comments, but I'd like to point out to the audience that we saved, I think, 30, 31 water hookups, too. And in going all the water meetings that I've been going to, I've been to two symposiums, one for the lakes and another one for Western Riverside County, and so on and so forth. And they said, they're telling us that the water allocation from the state of California is actually zero. Mr. Sullivan and his, the people that he works with in the water department are sending messages to our home, telling us that we don't have any water, that we're going to have to raise your rates, you're going to have to conserve on water, and so on and so on. So one of these days, I'm going to get an answer from Mr. Sullivan, how this jives about all this new housing that's going on down here in this area, when we don't have any water, and yet you're telling us we have to conserve, and you're telling us we have to pay more for our water rates. So maybe I'll ask you that question tomorrow night. And I'm glad you showed up tonight as a developer. So anyway, those are my comments.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
I wanted to respond to some of the math. At some other date, Mr. Sullivan, I would like to have a discussion with you about the fact that you do support high-density development at the same time, tell us we need to conserve water. I find that an oxymoron, but that's a discussion for another night. One of the difficulties that we're having, later on, we'll talk about police, and the Public Safety Committee made a recommendation, which we can't meet, because we don't have enough money to generate the number of police that we need. We have what some people call our barrios in this city. We don't have, not just sidewalks, we don't have streetlights for them. We've got Quail Valley that doesn't have sewage, and they have all kinds of challenges. We balance our budget, but you wouldn't invest in a company just because they were able to balance their budget. You ask for a lot more than that. And in our case, we're asking for growth in revenue. And I'll get back to this project later, but if you create a city and continue with a flood of 5,000 square foot lots, the League of California Cities will tell you, the Police Officers Association will tell you, the Fire Department will tell you, that the higher the density, the greater the demand for services, which also includes a higher crime rate. And so when you look at this particular map, Mr. Sullivan, while there are some losses on part of the side of the ledger, when you increase from 5,000, 6,500, 7,000 to 10,000 square foot lots in a gated community, what you have done is you've brought in a customer that has to pay more for that house, that has a greater purchasing power, which, for that particular area, will increase the property values, therefore increase the property tax. Therefore, the people that are in those homes will have an increased purchasing power. And therefore, our development people within this city will be able to use profiles like that to be able to go out and get more businesses in our community that are the kinds of businesses, and the high-end kinds of businesses, that our citizens want. And I'll remind you, sir, that those benefits occur year after year after year after year. When you build those higher-end homes, the cumulative impact creates a city that's more livable. And so anyway, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Denver?
I need to ask a quick question. Was there, since the average lots the second time around were substantially higher than the minimum lots, were there any 5,000 square foot lots actually going to be built in the
Yes, there are some. In some planning areas, there are some lots that are exactly 5,000. In the areas in particular that we were focusing on, which was Planning Area 11, that we broke into two distinct planning areas, the 5,000 minimum designation area, there are no lots that are at 5,000. They're all substantially bigger. And the 5,500 area, there are none at that size. They're all substantially bigger than that.
And speaking to Deputy Mayor's point, if you have a larger home, those 10,000 square foot homes, and you have less of them versus the smaller lots, can you guess whether the total price of all the lots that, over, you know, the 10,000 plus square foot versus in that closed area, versus what you lost adding those two? Which one's larger? Which one has more tax value for us? The smaller, smaller lots, more of them, or the larger ones, less of them?
Well, all I can, all I can say in terms of valuation is, looking at it today, there will be less, unless we do some specialized custom lot program where you have very large estate homes on those 10,000s, the total amount of saleable square footage will go down. Now, whether or not the values substantially go down or not depends upon the market conditions, the demand for those homes, and so on and so forth. At this point, we're looking at, you know, the relative value of those homes in, you know, in consideration of the loss of 33. Are we getting a net benefit or a net loss? At this point, it's, in today's dollars, we might be a little bit upside down in today's dollars, but we're optimistic that if we continue to build high-quality product and we continue to attract high-end builders, this could turn out to be a win for everybody down the road. So it's hard to tell what 2018 is going to bring to the table.
Today, it's a little less.
Yeah, but we're okay with that.
What about the water? If you have larger homes with water on them doing the yards, and you have lesser-sized homes, and you have water on them doing the yards, did we save any water by getting those lots larger?
Perhaps not.
Thank you.
Let's, before, I'm going to interject here. I'm going to continue with public testimony. We'll have additional questions when the applicant comes back to do his.
I just wanted to provide a quick scientific fact.
Okay. Quickly.
I live in a middle-class tract home. It's 15,400 square feet. That's what my lot size is. Now, if you take three 5,000 square foot homes, number one, their property values won't be that, but bear in mind, you have, let's say, four people in each one of those houses. You have more vegetation. You're right, Mr. Denver. That 15,000 square foot lot is going to take more water than the 5,000 for the vegetation. But inside, you've got four times three, you've got 12 people there, times toilets, times baths, times showers, and if Mr. Sullivan would give us a correct answer on this one, the water is much greater for a number of small lots because of the number of people within those houses. And in fact, the water department will go out today and tell you how many times you can flush your toilet. And if you flush your toilet beyond a certain amount, they'll charge you more. Imagine multiplying that by a number of small lots.
Next speaker, please.
Ann Pika?
Our city council members have given many campaign pledges and write-ups in the newspapers saying they are against high-density housing, but the truth is, you're all lying to the public. What you say and how you vote while seated on the dais are two different things. Audi Murphy Ranch is a pre-approved housing development of single-family residential homes. This is one of those entitlement cases that the county approved prior to Menifee becoming a city. Riverside County Planning Department approved this tentative trap map for 106 single-family homes, each on a minimum lot size of 7,200 square feet, which is the type of housing development we want and would fit nicely in Menifee. So why does this city council always approve the developer's request to reduce the lot size of five, the lot size to 5,000 and increase the quantity of homes to be built in the development? Every time the developer of the Audi Murphy Ranch or to start another section of the subdivision of the Riverside approved specific plot plan, they come before this city council and ask for a reduction in lot size and increase the bill size. And this city council approves it. So it is not Riverside County who is pushing for high-density housing in our city, it is the five council members sitting on the dais. This developer, with aid of the city planning department, is requesting a change to the approved existing build of 106 single homes, each on a lot size of 7,200 square feet, reduced to a build of 50, and the balance of 59 homes on a small lots of 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. No matter how you count it, that is high-density housing. And who does this help? The developer to make more money, that's who. Clearly, no member of this city council who votes for a decrease in the lot size of 7,200 square feet is representing the future homeowners or the citizens of Menifee. You can sit up there and pat each other on the back that you made a deal with the developer, but it will not change the fact you have put the screws to your constituents throughout this city by allowing high-density bills in Audi Murphy Ranch and other developments throughout this city. You can try and rebut what I have said, but it's all in black and white for anyone on the public to read. The public can download this from the Menifee website or request the release of the documents through public records. The facts are the facts. There is nothing on the documents released to the public on Menifee's website that shows 10,000 square foot lots or the overall build on these lots. I have the package that I downloaded. It's completely different than what you guys put up here tonight. Thank you.
Aside from seeing if your applicant has closing comments, that is the end of the speakers on this item.
Mr. Peters saying no. No additional comments from the applicant. Hitting the jumper here.
Hearing none. We are closing the public hearing at time 9:55. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Well, first, I've got some comments. First thing, I want to respond to Ms. Pika's comments. It's a wonderful night. I'm disagreeing with Ms. Pika and Ron Sullivan all at the same time.
Me, too.
Are you guys both in the same bag? I don't think so. Ms. Pika made a comment about 10,000 square foot lots not being visible. Mr. Johnson, we really worked hard on this with Mr. Peters and Sam Adelhoff, or however you pronounce his last name. He's a wonderful man, I find out. And it looks to me like we have a lot of 10,000 square foot lots that we didn't have before. Can you clarify that for the public, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the map that was handed out to us and shown as the exhibit shows those lots in the upper echelon and the gated portion of the enclave. And I believe that at a request, Adrian Peters and his group could actually plot those out by number and by lot size, if that's something you're interested in seeing.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, at the end of this, I'm going to make a motion to approve this. Mr. August and I didn't approve the last time, and once again, the concern is about too many small lots in our city. We've got a lot of developers coming in, building 5,000 square foot lots, or even 7,000 square foot lots, to the degree that you can get bigger and bigger lots, you've got a more affluent buyer, which generates higher property taxes and more sales tax revenue. And we've got properties in our city that need to be addressed and need help. We need to help them. We need to generate more revenue for them. We need more police. We need so many things that money can help us on. And by trying to bring in a higher profile buyer, we can do that. This particular project not only has increased lot sizes, but they have provided a gated community, which is another attractive amenity for higher-end buyers. I simply want to say that after Mr. August and I looked at the lot, or the project, the last time, we didn't approve it. If I had the option with the votes, originally, I'd have made all these lots larger, I'd have made them all over 15,000 square foot. Fact remains that these developers had the option not to negotiate with us at all. They could have told us, forget it. They already, they already had the ability to come in with a plan. But they were asking for an amendment, so because they were asking for an amendment, they gave Councilman August and I an opening. So we said no. They could have then gone back to their original map. But the Audi Murphy Ranch Group, Sam, somebody who will pronounce his last name correctly.
Al Haddick.
Al Haddick, a very gracious man. Adrian Peters took a lot of time, and they spent some money, obviously, as well, to try to work with the community and address what Mr. August and I were very concerned about. And frankly, I believe that the mayor and Councilman Denver and Councilman Furman will like what they have done. I want to support it for two reasons. Number one, it's a better project. It'll bring in more affluent buyers. Number two, just from the standpoint of working with developers, I want to again say thank you, Adrian. Thank you to the Audi Murphy Ranch Group. Thank you for cooperating. Instead of stiffing us and telling us, you could go back to your old map, said, hey, we'll work with you. So I want to thank you on behalf of Menifee for the good work you've done, and I move approval.
Do I have a second? We have four motions that we need to make.
Thank you.
The first motion would be Mr. Edgerton to introduce ordinance 2014-138. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Furman?
I'm in a gray area here. I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye. On the matter of ordinance number 2014-139, is there a motion to introduce?
Which one's this?
That's introduce ordinance number 2014-139.
From who? Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
I abstain.
And Mayor Mann?
Aye. Onto resolution number 355, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Abstain.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye. And for adoption of resolution number fourteen dash three fifty-six, is there a motion?
Some who? Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Abstain.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you for that.
And I too want to thank the Audi Murphy Ranch Development, Mr. Peters and your entire team and everybody who worked on this at the staff level, as well as my colleagues, Mr. Edgerton and Mr. August, because, you know, I wish, I wish Mr. Miller had not left from the BIA, because I want to reiterate what this council has already gone on record as saying, is that when you bring a project to Menifee and you file for a general plan amendment or a specific plan amendment on an already-approved project, you, we, we have every right to scrutinize it, peek and tweak it, make it better, make it less, whatever. And you were very, very cooperative, and I just want to echo the sentiments that the deputy mayor gave. Thank you very much for continuing to bring quality product to the city. Mr. Denver.
I also would like to compliment the product, the way it turned out, however, I do wish, for purposes of clarity and transparency, I wish the whole council had been along on your final meeting with two members of the council, rather than do it behind closed doors at somebody's house. I wish we'd all had a say, but so be it.
Onto agenda item twelve point one, a happier thought, acceptance of the Audi Murphy Ranch Sports Park, as shown on track three one three nine one dash four lot ninety-three, located at Newport Road and Lone Pine Drive. Mr. Johnson, is there a brief staff report?
There is. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jonathan Smith has your brief staff report.
Woo-hoo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Long time coming.
All right. So it's my privilege to recommend to council the acceptance of the park at Audi Murphy Park. The Public Works Department, along with Community Services, Planning, Building, have all worked collaboratively with the developer to deliver a beautiful park to our community. And this is a view of it, the plan, this is what it looks like. That's not a Photoshop drawing, it's actually a rainbow over the, over the field. And you can see a picture of the skate park there, closer look at the other amenities, a slide I can't wait to try out, and picnic bench there. Here's the skate park. It looks, looks great. I'm not a skater, but it looks wonderful. So we recommend that council accept Audi Murphy Sports Park as it is shown.
Is there a motion to accept?
Some who?
And we, before we take a roll call vote on that, we have a motion, we have a second, do we have a public speaker on this item?
Yes, Your Honor, Adrian Peters.
Quick. Man, he's...
I'll be very brief, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to express my sincere appreciation to staff. The park's been in the planning and development stages for quite a while. We've got a lot of feedback and a lot of input from a lot of members of staff to tweak a few things here and there, but I think we're happy with the outcome. I think you guys will be very happy with the outcome. We look forward to the public coming out on Saturday morning for the grand opening celebration. We're definitely excited about it, and again, we've got three more parks coming down the road, as you saw in our specific plan, and we're looking forward to moving forward and building the next one. And we're hoping to come in with our plans for the next park here very shortly. So we're excited. So thank you.
I, I want to thank you as well and staff, because Memorial Weekend always kicks off summer. And how fitting is it that this park is being opened and we're accepting it, assuming we're gonna vote favorably for it, to accept it tonight so that it can be opened? The deputy mayor is gonna speak to that on Saturday at the opening, and thank you all, staff and your organization, for making that happen, to have this park available, open to the, the whole city and the residents over there for Memorial Weekend. Great job. Roll call vote, please, on the acceptance of the park.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Furman.
Yes.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye, however, well, I'm gonna open it back up to you, if you would like to change your vote before it gets officially recorded.
Yes, I'll abstain.
Very well.
I have recorded the abstention.
It was a slip.
All right, very well. Onto agenda item twelve point two, approve a TUMF agreement and a DIF agreement for eligible new transportation improvements at Heritage Lake Phase Four at Briggs and McCall.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jonathan Smith has a brief staff report.
I'll make it as brief as I can. In front of you is, staff is recommending the approval of the TUMF and DIF agreement for Heritage Lake Phase Four, eight hundred and seventeen single-family residential units. The project is going to extend McCall Boulevard all the way to Briggs Road, as shown on the map here. This is a TUMF facility, making it eligible for the developer to receive TUMF credit. Also, they'll be extending another facility, TUMF facility, which is Briggs Road, all the way from Grand to Matthews. They will also be installing a traffic signal at Heritage Lake Drive and McCall Boulevard, as well as Briggs Road and McCall Boulevard.
Can you go back to the Briggs Road slide, please? Which direction is that going? Is that going north or south?
North.
Is that seventy-four there, or is that Matthews?
Matthews.
So it only goes to Matthews, it doesn't go to Heritage High School?
Correct.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
As I mentioned, they'll be installing two traffic signals, one at Heritage Lake and one at Briggs Road. The TUMF ordinance requires the developer payment a fair share of the cost. The estimate for their TUMF obligation is seven point two million dollars. The TUMF program allows a maximum credit of three point three million for the improvements. The estimated cost of the improvements right now is about two point one. The, the DIF signal component of the, the DIF agreement, the maximum that they can receive is three hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. They're actually going to spend four hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars to install the traffic signals. So staff recommends the approval of the TUMF agreement, as well as the DIF agreement, and to authorize us to submit a copy of the executed TUMF agreement to WRCOG and approve the DIF agreement between the city and the developer. That's my presentation.
Mr. Denver.
Go back about four slides where the eight, eight million dollars is in there, maybe one, a couple more, maybe.
Detroit, you want to see, you want to see that, right?
The TUMF fees, seven million, two hundred thousand, and it was eight hundred and something lots?
Correct.
So that's a hundred thousand dollars a lot?
No, it's not a hundred thousand dollars.
Ten thousand?
It's about eight, eighty-eight hundred?
Eighty-eight seventy-three.
Eighty-eight seventy-three.
Eighty-eight?
We have a representative from the developer who knows this in detail, and...
Eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-three for the TUMF obligation per household.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the TUMF agreement?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll give that to Mr. Furman, and roll call vote, please.
Is this motion for both the TUMF and DIF agreement approvals?
You need separate motions, or can we consider both?
The item was presented together, I believe we can accept both at one time.
Mr. August, is that your motion to approve both?
Yes.
And is that your second? Roll, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda item twelve point three, approve contract for law enforcement services with the county of Riverside.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have a brief staff report by Terry Willoughby, but I wanted to update you through the Public Safety Committee as well. There was a recommendation to add officers for the next fiscal year. We've done our best to accommodate what the request was, and we fell a little short of that due to revenue estimates, we're not as high as we had hoped, but we are adding a motor officer and two deputies at mid-year, a motor officer for a full year, two deputies at mid-year. And the reason for the extension on the contract is, since we're increasing our services, we need to amend the current contract, and Terry Willoughby, the Finance Director, will go over a brief staff report for you.
Well, it's too bad Ms. Manier didn't stick around for this presentation, she would have been corrected, so please proceed.
Pretty much what Rob said. Contract term was, is from July first, two thousand twelve, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. The prior contract expired June thirtieth, two thousand twelve, but we were able to extend the terms of service with no change in contract terms until this time. Per direction from the city's Public Safety Committee, the contract presented before you calls for increased level of staffing, we are adding one motor officer and adding patrol hours equal to two deputies. Funding for this contract will be included in the city's fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen general budget, fund budget, as well as the budget of future fiscal years as appropriate. The next slides just show a representation of the percentage of public safety costs, which is police and fire, as the percentage of the general fund. This is last fiscal year, this fiscal year, and that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember August.
Just a quick question. We always use the matrix, whatever you want to call it, per thousand people, police officers per thousand people, which is an acceptable number, and I believe, I heard at the safety meeting, was about four point seven five now. And can you or the city manager, can you or the city manager tell us what these two additional officers and bike officers will bring us up to?
I would actually, I would actually ask Captain Judge to do that for us, if possible. Thank you.
And then Terry, could you put, put the previous slide back up? Thanks.
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council staff, thank you for the opportunity to address you. The numbers, I believe you're asking for the one per one thousand, which is a norming, it's actually a guideline, and we did speak about that in public safety. Currently, you are at point four zero. This will give you point four three, but remember, as population increases, that number goes back down. It is my interpretation that we will probably remain in the point four three range.
And quick, a question to you, Captain, I do believe we discussed in the safety meeting that you'll probably, and again, this is not a criticism, this is just a fact, you're gonna be coming back next year, and we're gonna be asking for more police officers until we get it up to a number that, with the, the city feels acceptable and safe with.
That's correct. I'll, I'll be coming back with more.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Public Safety Committee was very clear on the fact that we want to add officers and we're doing the best we can, but as you know, we have a, we have a revenue problem, we don't have an expense problem. We did, going through the budget process that we brought to the Finance Committee, we, we trimmed about three and a half million dollars of requests on the expense side to get our budget balanced, that you'll see in June fourth budget adoption, or, sorry, excuse me, budget workshop. So we have this cyclical nature where our, our population is increasing faster than our sales tax and our property tax income is rising, and to be able to add officers means we need to increase that sales tax and property tax, or find other avenues to, to collect and bring in more revenue. So we're doing the best we can right now. We know it's not to the level that's optimum and that, that we would require, or even Captain Judge would recommend, but we appreciate him working with us through the process.
Mr. Denver.
The Safety Committee, as long, as well as the staff, looked at the possibilities of three police officers, and then the combination, whether we have motorcycle or automobile officers, plus gang officers was discussed, gang control, and any number of other things. Remember, just for the audience, the goal, the intent here, the, the, nobody is intending to lower the number of police. What happened was, is we basically, there's a little issue about CSOs, but we basically held the same number of police from when we started, and it's just that the population went up and we didn't increase the number of police. And the population, as you know, is going up maybe three people a day, and so the, the number of police per thousand keeps falling, so we're having to catch back up. And what's being said is, is as we put more police in, the population keeps growing, so it's hard to get it to go forward, and so we're doing the best we can with the money we have.
The, could you go back to the previous slide too, Terry? Okay, so, no, the one after that. Just a math question, since Ms. Manier criticized me for my math skills. This slide shows for the, for last fiscal year, a seventy-two percent in, cost of law, of public safety to the general fund, and if you go to the next slide, sixty-four percent this year, how can we absorb a seven, how can we absorb a seven percent increase in our law enforcement contract, but yet, the total cost of public safety goes down by ten percent year over year?
Well, our total budget increased.
By an equal amount?
By, quite significantly from last, this is, the seventy-two percent is from the adopted budget.
Okay.
And as you know, we had significant revenue at mid-year, which went to other departments. The budget for two thousand fourteen is significantly higher and absorbs that, that change in cost.
Okay, and then the next question is probably for Mr. Johnson and Captain. If we get our budget dust from Sacramento with SB sixty-nine or AB fifteen twenty-one being approved, the plan that's before us tonight is to add a motor officer now at July one, and, and two other deputies at mid-year, mid-year being December. If we get pennies from heaven in Sacramento, how soon could we, the Safety Committee, meet? How soon could we make adjustments in the, in the force? Can you recruit that fast if we were to add additional deputies at mid-year in the, in the coming months?
I'm instructed that any kind of addition should take about twelve months to eighteen months to be able to fulfill any positions. And again, I would just like to thank the Public Safety Committee, the city manager, Terry and staff, they really fought for this, they found the money that we were able to keep as many positions as, as we can right now.
So I guess, all right, armed with that information that it would take about twelve to eighteen months to ramp up to a higher force strength, as soon as we get any kind, if, if the governor signs these bills, then I would recommend that we have, I know you're all, I'm gonna remain optimistic.
It'll rain tomorrow, too.
Good luck.
It's gonna rain tonight. I guess my point is, though, if it does, all right, if it does, can we have a special workshop or special meeting in July timeframe?
Can, can we?
To accelerate those decisions?
We'll have a plan. Can we, can we talk about this? Someday, somebody's gonna bring out the condition of the roads and the amount of cost of slurring and paving the roads. There's another big hole that I think is a safety, not as big as police, but I think we need to sit and talk about all this.
I know, I, I appreciate that, and I agree with you. It has to be a balance. However, you and I and Mr. Denver, and Mr. Edgerton, as part of the original council, when we started this city, we had X, X number of deputies, we were at one thousand per, one deputy for one thousand residents. We've shrunk because, thanks to Governor Brown and, and the two thousand and eleven RDA take and the VLF take, and so the issue is for us, in my opinion, is to ramp back up to a level as economically feasible as possible. And so all I'm suggesting is, is that if we do have two approved bills and the governor signs them, restoring that funding to us, that we go into strategic planning mode and to try to short, shorten up that eighteen-month hiring cycle, is what I'm suggesting.
Mr. Mayor, I think everyone would agree with you on that, I mean, if, how it's allocated, Mr. Denver's correct, there's various ways to allocate it, but I don't, you and I disagree. I, I used to know the governor, I don't believe he'll support it, I think he still drives a little tiny Chevrolet. If we get another injection of four and a half million bucks, we'll not only have a special meeting, we will have a big party.
I agree. I agree. And I think, I think the governor forgets that he was a mayor at some times, too, so...
Remember, there's also Republican this area, so it's not likely we're gonna get the money.
Well, I, I, you guys are, you guys are just nutso, we're gonna get this money. Okay? That's my prediction. Mr. Johnson, you had, you had your light on for quite some time.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to, I wanted to commend Terry and Willoughby and Captain Judge, because the increases that we've seen over the last couple of years are really one-time dollars that have come into the development, and we've really tried to parse that out and keep our staff as thin as possible, and this year, we made an obligation, contractually to, to law enforcement to make that increase. So just a caution as we go forward, if that money doesn't come back, we're gonna have the same issue again next year, that our population's rising faster than our sales tax and our property tax, and the cost to, to add officers is gonna, is gonna... to add officers is going to, is going to be a little bit higher than what we can afford. So, just want to make that caution as we move forward. It's going to be this kind of cyclical economic effect as we, as we move forward, so.
And we're, and we're going to continue to balance our budget, as Deputy Mayor well knows from the Finance Committee. We're going to continue to balance the budget on the backs of our staff, because we can't hire enough people to provide the services that we do that people seem to come to the microphone and complain about. We just don't understand the concept that we're not really empire building. We're delivering services to the community. Deputy Mayor?
Well, just clarification for people seeing this graph. You can see that the public safety is very lopsided as far as getting the larger share of our funds. But that's true in any city. That's what it takes for public safety. And it also makes a point that some of us continue to pound away on. The higher the density in a city, the greater request for police officers. Police officers will tell you that, the fire will tell you that. The League of Cities pounds that at you every time, every year, when they have an opportunity to give instruction to new councilpeople coming in. As, as the, as the density goes up, in particular, as the socioeconomic profile goes down, your service cost skyrocket. So, it's something we want to keep in mind if we want to be able to support these police like we want to.
Would a member of the Safe, Public Safety Committee like to make a motion and a second to approve this contract? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We have a, we have a public speaker on this item.
Ann Pika?
She left.
Good.
Was that, was that our only public speaker?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
No, Ms. Pika left. I watched her walk out of the building when Mr. Edgerton started talking about the larger lots and what, okay?
She knew I was going to support it.
So, would the member of the Public Safety Committee like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. August?
Move, move to approve.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Denver, motion, and Mr. August seconded.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Denver?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Hi.
Councilmember Furman?
Hi.
Councilmember August?
Hi.
And Mayor Mann?
Hi.
Thank you.
Agenda item 12.4, approve amendment number three to agreement with AQ Municipal Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Jonathan Smith has a brief staff report.
Very brief. As a result of the increased activity and plan checks, and the fact that I was unable to hire staff as quickly as I thought, this, this consultant has an increased workload, which caused his contract to exceed the current amount of the contract. So, due to the increase, I'm asking for an amendment of this contract of $175,000, continue with plan check services.
Mr. Denver?
How many staff could you have hired for that much money?
One and a half.
How long is this contract?
Till June, I mean, till July, I'm sorry. That, at that time, I'm going to go out on the street with an RFP.
This July?
Yeah.
This July?
This July.
170, just to cover three months?
Yeah. A lot of work.
Wow.
But, the, this, between now and June, though, I mean, we authorized you for new full-time equivalents and the money and the budget to go with it. So, are we, are we talking the same thing here? Or is this just a stopgap to get us to July 1 until you can hire these folks, or what? Terry?
Yes, he has, recruitment's in process. Employees will be on board. Also, I don't think what's mentioned here, but it is covered in the fiscal impact of the staff report. We have revenues that'll more than cover this. Revenues are more than I projected because this is covered by developer deposits.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
That was going to be my, my point, that they're covered by developer deposits. The other issue is, and Mr. Smith failed to address it because he was going so fast, we are moving out the Tri-Lakes consultants. And the time that it takes to move those out and hire the new staff, we had to have a stopgap. That's why we're adding this to the AQ engineering.
Is there a motion to amend this contract?
Show move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Hi.
Councilmember Furman?
Hi.
Councilmember August?
Hi.
Councilmember Denver?
Hi.
And Mayor Mann?
Hi.
Thank you.
Agenda item 12.5, approve professional services agreement with DR Becker Consulting, Inc. for construction management services.
Again, same situation here. Workload increase requiring the addition of the amendment of this contract, which we are adding. Remending this contract as well to cover the cost for the additional work, which is developer deposit work. And I'm asking for amendment of this contract to take us to July.
Is there a motion to approve?
How much is this contract?
It's not on my.
$50,000.
$55,000 in the staff report.
That's what it is. I apologize. It's not on your, at my fingertips.
Just as a.
$50,000.
$50,000.
Just as a little question, if this, if this sat on somebody's decks for six weeks, could they catch up with a new employee, or would we be burying somebody?
No. This, this involves stormwater and we're in the midst of some stormwater issues with the regional board that needs to be addressed right now.
Okay.
Show move.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by Mr. Furman.
Councilmember Furman?
Hi.
Councilmember August?
Hi.
Councilmember Denver?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Hi.
Mayor Mann?
Hi.
Thank you.
On the City Attorney Report.
Just a couple of things. I have circulated to all of you information about campaign reform options. And that includes both the proposed ordinance that's modeled on the Temecula ordinance, and also some ideas about other reform measures that you may wish to consider. One other thought coming up this evening is to call to your attention that certainly in terms of the economic development, residential intensity, development issues, one way that some communities have dealt with this is to create an ordinance that ties development rate, that is residential rate, to economic development. So that the residential does not come in first, but it comes in only if matched with economic development. That's a model that was used in the city of Goleta, and it, it really does set up a, a method for accomplishing some of the goals that you've discussed.
Mr. August?
I know it's late, but is that as good as it sounded to me?
Yeah.
It's worked, it's worked well for the city of Goleta.
I'd really like to hear more about that.
Yeah. They call it the Goleta Growth Management Ordinance. And it ties development together with, as I said, residential development with economic development. So, you don't just get one, you, you get a balance. And that enhances the return.
Mr. Denver?
Did I hear you say that you don't allow five homes in until you have a 7-Eleven?
It's not quite like that, but it, it, it calls for a balance in the development. And you, you monitor the economic development and it can slow down for a period of time, residential development. The, and the theory of that is that, as Mr. Edgerton has said, residential development costs more in terms of services than economic development does.
I, I don't understand. The reason we don't have his cheesecake factory and with, you know, staff spent half their time at ICSC trying to get that stupid thing. And, and they couldn't do it because we didn't have enough houses. All little ones on 5,000 square foot lots.
They want big ones.
No, they wanted little ones.
There, there's a balance, obviously, to be had. But I, I just call that to your attention, because there are ways to do this. And, and there are ways that, that you can shape that policy and the timing of the development to, to create a better balance.
Deputy Mayor?
This just came up, so I, I think it would be difficult to, to make any decisions about it. Does that include infrastructure?
Yeah, it ties it, it ties it all together. I can get you a copy of the Goleta ordinance. And, and that's actually been in effect before Goleta was incorporated as a city. They had that for their region. But I'll, I'll be happy to get that to, for you.
Well, I think, you still have the floor, sorry.
Well, okay. Just, I'd be interested in, in seeing it so we could get a staff analysis of what the implications were.
Could, could you, based upon the discussion here, since you mentioned it, share that with us?
Sure.
However, what I would ask the council not do yet is give any direction to staff to move out on that, because we've already given Mr. Leclerc and his team direction to get our development code situated first. And we've got our capital improvement plan. We've got our general plan. Let's get the development code squared away. And then let's explore this. I, because I think that's something that we all, all of us can sink our teeth into.
It's, it's not an overnight process. And it, and it may involve even a general plan element factor, too. So, it, it depends. As I said, a number of communities have done similar kinds of things. And I just thought, given the discussion, you might want to hear about.
Is there consensus of the council, the City Attorney, to share that report?
Yeah. Isn't Goleta all Democrats?
No.
It is. Without question, it is. However, there is a, an alliance that is unusual one, sort of, between environmentalists and folks who would like to preserve certain values in their community. And.
Coastal Commission.
Yeah. And, and as a result, you get a, an odd mix of politics in these things. I worked with a group called the Homestead Defense Association up there that was all Republicans. And they were equally committed to this kind of thing. It, it was a very bizarre kind of place, I have to tell you.
Synergistic.
Yeah. It, they, they set aside national politics when they talked about growth.
Well, as a city should, I think. City Manager reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Jeff Wyman, I've asked him to do an economic development update on ICSC and some other things that are going around town on June 4th. So, we'll be bringing that back. We've been in various discussions on a workshop with the rural business community. We've met now three times as staff with their representatives. We formalized a process of an ordinance that we went over with them today. They are now taking that ordinance and doing some adjustments to it to see what they like about it. It'll have a strike through, so they'll, you'll see, council will be able to see staff language versus rural community language. And then, once we get that back and we go over that with them, we're going to produce a, a workshop for council that allows the rural community and city staff to present side by side, give council an opportunity to set a policy that we move forward to planning commission.
Mr. August?
Mr. Johnson, that would, those would be for businesses in existence prior to 2000.
That's correct.
Did you say?
No, I did not. But, but that's what I meant to say. And the third item is the RFP for the City Attorney Services came back with 12 submittals. There's a plan that Terry has to go through those submittals and get interviews set up for, I believe, two and a half weeks from now. The goal would be to go through interviews and possibly make an announcement or adjustment for July 1 in the next budget cycle. And Robert Lennox has a community services report for you.
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor and Council. I'll keep it brief. Some of this you've seen before, so it's just an update. The, five things I'll just briefly run over today. And then, some important dates to mark your calendar by. Obviously, the park opening this Saturday at 10:00 AM at Monty Murphy Ranch Sports Park. Then, on May 26, Memorial Day celebration will be from 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock. And then into June, the 14th and 15th is the Father's Day Camp Out, which is a recurring annual event. And then, June 18th, obviously, is the Independence Day Celebration at Wefield Park. So, again, mark your calendars. Those are great opportunities to, for the public and also to interact with the public. As I, as you saw on the previous slide, and you've seen in previous meetings, our Parks Trails Open Space and Recreation Master Plan, RFP process is, is winding down. Staff has assessed all of seven submittals that came in and have conducted interviews and will be returning to council at the next meeting on June 4th with a recommendation for contract award. So, we're excited to have that moving forward with the anticipated start of July 1. Additionally, as you may recall, our committees and commission processes ramping up. Those applications for two of, for the commission, Park Recreation Trails Commission, as well as the Senior Advisory Committee is, were due today, May 21. And so, on June 4th, we'll be returning here with a staff report and then seeking your appointments for each of those bodies and boards. Additionally, the Youth Advisory Committee, that will not close until later in August, on the 22nd, to allow for kids to come back into school and settle in before submitting their applications. Those first meetings, the commission meeting will be June 26. And then, the Senior Advisory Committee will depend on what the committee members availability is in June. Capital Improvement Staff has been busy doing site visits to take an assessment of our, the condition of our parks, looking for things like branding, signage, health and safety, general aesthetics. Many of the things that were presented last meeting, when the allocation was approved by council for, from the Park DIF funds to address some of these in the, in the immediate. And then again, there will be a DIF allocation as part of the fiscal year 14-15 budget that will be presented at the workshop at the next meeting. Some of those improvements, here are just some examples. You know, Peterson Park, there are several island issues, planting issues, irrigation issues continuing over. There's, over at Lolladera Park, several issues, playground ground cover, as well as drinking fountain. The pictures speak a thousand words. And these are just a few of the things that staff was able to identify. Additionally, Lazy Creek has some major issues that need to be addressed, not only on the center, but also in the park. Lau Marsh, again, more planter issues that need to be addressed. And then, Rancher Ramona, certainly in a little better shape than the others, simply because of its, its age.
It's before it's located. My district's in my.
Yes.
Down the street from me.
And, and also Nova Park, which is also in pretty decent shape. However, signage is an issue in all of these, since the city is taking a little closer relationship in the operatorship, along with Valleywide. This is an opportunity to introduce and enforce some of those rules with the approval of the second reading and adoption of the ordinance tonight.
Where, where's Nova Park? I'm completely drawing a blank on that park.
Main North McLaughlin and, and a few, or Myriad Road.
Yeah. Oh, so it's in District.
Pocket Park.
Pocket Park up off of Myriad and McLaughlin?
I think it's, Mr. Denver's just way on the, on the other side.
John's, yeah.
That's his little train.
All right. Thank you. Sure. Some, some of the signage that you'll be seeing in those parks shortly include park rules, dog park rules, and then skate park rules for the Audi Murphy Ranch Park, opening this weekend. And then, here's an example of monument signage that you'll also be seeing this weekend. Some of the things that don't currently exist in the park are simple signs that kind of encourage the public to use those parks with some, some good practices. So, these actually are very common in other cities' parks.
This sign where it starts with no throwing, is that the actual sign?
That would be the actual sign.
Interesting. Thank you.
Someone's going to have fun with that sign.
Yeah, that's awkward.
That is awkward. Someone's going to, well, some youngster is going to have fun with that sign.
Staff is also conducting a cost study analysis right now to look at the assessment of fees for service. We've been meeting with the consultants to review this and doing a collection of expenses and program facility inventory.
Like billing or something.
The intent, though, is to determine what recreation fees should be collected in order to deliver services and programs. And then, the, the end goal is to come back to council with a recommended fee schedule for your consideration, so you can weigh in on what level of cost recover you would like to see for programs and facility use. And then finally, we've been meeting pretty regularly with Valley, Valleywide Recreation and Parks District per the direction of council at the last meeting, to talk about how the new contract will be structured effective July 1. Again, that includes those seven parks, the landscaped areas, and, and the two centers, programming and maintenance for all of those. So far, we've talked about cost of services and this cost study, which we'd like Valleywide to be a part of, registration reservation system. We were updated on just this week in, in their proposal. And then, also discussed billing and revenue reporting processes. So, it's quite involved. There's a lot of moving pieces to it, but I'm confident we'll be able to execute a mutually beneficial agreement in time for the new fiscal year. That concludes my update.
Back to the Yak and Sack slide for just a minute. Right there. That's in the middle. Are we going to be appointing commissioners? Are we going to be appointing commissioners and SAC members on June 4?
That's correct.
Okay, and just to confirm, because Mr. Edgerton and I both have emailed between staff on this separately, we have options to review applications, but I know who I'm appointing, and we don't have to go through that. If someone wants to review the applications, they can. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
When will we get a chance to review them, and when will we get a chance to interview?
Effective tomorrow, because the deadline was today, those applications will be available, and I think the city clerk is going to be able to compile those for anyone who would like to see them.
Once you compile them, are you having a general meeting where we all get to interview them, those of us that will choose to?
That would be at your discretion if you wish to interview someone. I'll be sending you the applications, and they will also be included with the packet that Mr. Lennox is providing next to.
I really would recommend that you do it the way we did it back 100 years ago, where you just have them come in and talk, and we can ask questions. Why don't you like that? You want to call them up individually and interview?
You don't have to ask my representative any questions. It's my decision to vote for them. What you ask...
We're not communicating.
No, he's talking about, based upon the, he doesn't have any idea who he's appointing.
Okay.
He wants to interview.
Okay. I thought you wanted to ask all the commissioners questions.
But we need to have a place where all the people who've applied, who he hasn't chosen yet, obviously, and we get to ask them questions and meet them. How do we know who they are?
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Denver, we'd be happy to set up interviews for you.
It ought to be anybody you want.
Whoever else would like to attend, we would love to set up interviews for anyone who would like to attend.
SAC, Senior Advisory.
Thank you.
The only paid position is the Trails Committee, right?
That's correct. That's the only commission that has a stipend.
And we're doing the same thing for, we get a chance to interview and meet the people on the other committee that we're choosing, the SAC, as well as, you know, any committee we're meeting, we get to choose, right? We get to meet with them and interview them.
That's correct.
So it'll be two meetings.
We're not doing the Yak, though. The council's not doing the Yak.
Apparently not.
That's much later.
SAC and PRTC, I guess.
That's a good point, Mr. Furman. The Youth Advisory Committee is Mr. Lennox and the Parks Commissioner. All right, very good. Mr. Johnson, does that conclude your city manager report?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Very well. Future agenda requests from council members? Mr. Furman?
I actually have one item, and I don't know, it should have maybe been brought up or two, possibly if we could get a consensus to give direction to Kathy Bennett to notify as many landholders that are involved in the hillside ordinance that we could possibly do. I don't know how many there are out there, but I don't think the majority, hardly any of them have ever been notified. They're just getting blindsided by what we're doing. If, would we have their parcel numbers and their addresses, could we send them a letter?
I think some, a city attorney ought to lean in on that. What if we miss one of them? What if we go into an extra area that isn't really part of that? How does she have the qualifications?
I don't know, but I feel, I feel bad that we're going to maybe not get some input from some people that have property that don't know this ordinance is even going to affect them, if we could notify more people.
City Attorney?
Well, you can always notify more people. Ordinarily, that's set up with a radius kind of determination as to how far out you want to go from certain areas.
They're actually going to own property that's in the hillside little circles.
It can be determined. I assume that that's done for planning generally, whenever you have a project, that there's a radius that gets mailed.
I would like if we made an effort to notify as many people as we could.
Mr. Johnson?
We have four, five weeks before. I think we can get some letters out. Mr. Johnson?
So the same sort of map that we didn't want to create, because it would cost us too much money and too much time and effort, are you suggesting we create that map now so that we can mail these out? Because that's the only way we're going to get the information, is to create the map. So we'll need to identify all the parcels, right, we need to identify all the parcels, get all the addresses, make sure the slopes are within 33%.
Hundred thousand dollars in a year?
I don't think it's going to be that expensive, but it's going to be time intensive. So we could post another, we could post a notice in the newspaper, through our website, through our e-newsletter, to do those types of things.
I would, it looks to me like the council's going to say, wait a minute, we don't want to expend all that money. But if we could put out a notice, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Furman that we should have an outreach program, have some kind of reach these people. Website plus notification publication.
Those were all done.
Somehow.
Yeah.
And just to, just so you recall, those have all been done for all the ordinances that come before this body. And so those publications go out, so if you want us to do that again, we're happy to do that. But if we have, if you're talking about an individual mailing notification, that's going to take a little bit of work to do.
Mr. August?
Just direction, that's all I'm looking for.
Excuse me, but weren't those people notified during the public hearings for the Planning Commission?
Yes, they were.
So why are we doing that again?
Yeah, I'm, I just want to...
How have they been notified?
Well...
They were notified because it was in 500, whatever, whatever ordinance that is. They'd already been notified.
Not only that, I couldn't support a separate mailing for this, just because, I mean, I respect your position and desire to notify the public to the maximum extent, but there has to be a balance. I kind of tend to agree with what Mr. August just shared, because when you also take into consideration the amount of effort that we've gone to with the general plan and the general plan advisory committees and the 12 Planning Commission meetings for all of the general plan, I think there's been a lot of notification. And all we're trying to do here is make that code our own and detach it from the county ordinance. And I think, I think the public, the newspapers and the other things are just at, I think they're fine. That'd be my position. But, okay, very well, sounds like there's not a second on that. Are there councils or any other, Mr. Edgerton?
Yes, there's a number of communities that are upscale that put a limitation on how small lots can be, with an understanding that there's always specific instances where you can take a look at a lot for some reason why it should be smaller. But rather than to come in with, say, 15,000 square foot minimum lot or whatever, which is what I like to see, which is what we originally started off with in our city of Menifee. If you look at some of our early tracts, they didn't go down to these small lots. So I just simply like to throw that on the agenda for discussion so that we could perhaps even put out a moratorium with the understanding, we're not going to reach out and grab people who are already in the pipeline, but for future reference to see if we can modify the way we approach development. If the council, if a majority of the council is antagonistic toward these smaller lots, and at times, we're going to end up voting down a number of projects, seems to me we ought to have a policy that gives future developers better notice, so they don't come in and make proposals that are just going to get shot down in the first place. So I would like to...
I think what you're saying is that what we really ought to do is require that houses be 5,000 feet, and that people aren't allowed to move into Menifee unless they make 60, 75,000 dollars. And maybe no, everybody has to be white, I think that's good. Or people have to have had a job 10 years, things like that.
No, you must have been friends with a basketball player, but I, no, when you're talking about people in our town that need help, we're not able to help them. You've got Quail Valley here. This was a big issue when we started running. They still don't have sewers. They still have so many challenges in Quail Valley. We have places we call barrios in your district, Mr. Denver, they don't have lights. They don't have sidewalks. They don't have anything.
You're the one who pushed the high density up into my district. You're the one who absolutely...
No, no, no. If you look at the record, I never, I didn't push the density, and I didn't collect the paychecks like you did. So this, all I'm doing is I'm asking for a second to see if we can reach a potential moratorium and a policy which sets a lot size for our city, like so many cities do that are higher scale than ours.
Mr. Furman?
So your kind of suggestion, Wally, that we go to like three houses per acre?
Something like that, 15,000 square feet.
I'll second that.
Okay, so to be clear and have a little bit of leniency on staff, I just, we've got a motion and a second to have a future discussion item on a minimum lot size function as part of our general plan. However, let's not, I mean, we've got a lot of issues coming up in June and July, so are you okay with this maybe not happening till August?
About after the next election?
I mean, it doesn't...
No, I suspect it's already going to be an issue for the election. But, no, I would like to have it in, let's say, July, then.
July or early, okay, very good. Thank you for that flexibility. Is that okay with staff, looking on the horizon?
Yes, to reiterate, did you need anything from staff? Are you going to have a discussion on a policy to set minimum lot sizes?
I think maybe we'll have a discussion so that we can give more definition to staff.
A simple topic that comes back in July is okay. Okay.
Mr. August?
And that would, I don't know if you said this, Mr. Edgerton, deputy on projects in the future that haven't been approved.
Right, yes, that's correct. Any other future requests? Just a clarification from staff before we wrap up. Mr. Johnson, could you give us an update? Where are we at with the signage ordinance? Has the Chamber of Commerce finished their review? Is it back in house? Are we going to see the signage ordinance anytime soon?
It is not back in house, to my knowledge. I'll check on that and I'll send an email out to council to tell you where that's at.
Okay, so we, let's see, who was there? Mr. August, I think, was there with me the day. Who was with me in the restaurants for the mayor's business roundtable? Well, in any event, we talked about, we only gave the Chamber of Commerce 60 days, so...
It's up, it's due.
60 days is up, so let's get it back, and let's get it back on our agenda. That was a goal of this entire council. All right, are there anything else? Any other discussion items? Hearing none, we are adjourned.